Good evening. This is the, uh, are we, Don, are we on?
Yeah.
Perfect. Awesome. Um, this is the Easton Meadow Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Uh, in attendance here, Russ Denver, George Kingston, sounding chair as well, Pete Punderson, Bailey Mitchell, and Nina Fazio, as well as myself, John Torch. Is anybody in the audience or on Zoom here, uh, recording, um, or taping this meeting besides LCAP? If you are, just make yourselves know now.
Don, I'm, I'm recording.
Bailey, okay, you're recording for a minute. Perfect. Um, is anybody else recording? Hearing and seeing none. All right, we will go into the approval of the minutes. We have the May 16th, 2023 meeting minutes. Um, everybody should have them. Does anybody have any questions, any revisions, changes, anything they'd like to add on that? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstained. Abstained. I did, I did read the minutes, but I was not here.
Okay, that's four yeses, one abstention. Okay, um, so we have our first item. Um, so Mr. Clark.
Case SPRW 2023-17, request for site plan review waiver for JP and Company Suites and Treats, a home office at 21 Dearborn Street, Assessors Parcel ID 12A-23-65, located in the Residence C zoning district, applicant Jessica Park, 21 Dearborn Street, Easton Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Okay. All right, is there somebody, either the applicant or representative of the applicant?
Yeah.
If you could just come up.
Perfect. I've never done this. You have to give me lots of direction.
No, no worries at all. Um, just kind of talk about the business. Um, will there be any commercial vehicles? Anything kind of of that nature?
Absolutely. So the business is, where's that? Right here?
Oh, there's a microphone if you.
Awesome. I talk pretty loud, but I got, um, so the business is to sell freeze dried candy. So we will purchase candy that's already been made, Skittles, um, High Chews, Starburst, things like that. We purchased in a commercial grade freeze dry machine. It's, um, in our home, so that's the only delivery we've had. It's delivered by FedEx rate. That's the only one we'll ever have. Um, everything else is purchased by us through Costco, Walmart, things like that. We freeze dry, package the candy in food grade material, and then resell it. And it makes it like crunchy, like astronaut food kind of thing. So it's a fun new spend on candy.
Uh, is there, um, what was I going to say? Is there any questions to the board have any?
Yeah, just, uh, so you're freeze drying it on the premises?
Correct. So the machine is about less smaller than an oven. Um, you put the candy on a tray. It goes in, it freezes your product first. Most candies actually don't need to be frozen, but the food grade stuff does have to be frozen. It has a vacuum and a heat pump that pulls all the air out of it. Most candies will then puff because it releases all the air. It gets puffy and crunchy. Um, and then you package it into a airtight bag.
And then where do you store it?
So it's stored sealed in a bag. We heat seal them, so they have a zipper and then a heat seal stored in the bag. And then those are then stored inside totes that have a gamma seal on the top to make sure that its air doesn't get any moisture, which it's already been heat sealed, just like, uh, any other product that is completely sealed at the store. Um, and then we go to sell those at farmers markets and at fundraisers and things like that. So the machine itself is stored in our basement of our home.
And there's no, like, uh, nobody's coming to the property to, like, buy. It's, it's going out.
Yep. So we would put all of the product in our own vehicle, take it to a farmer's market, take it to a craft fair, things like that. So.
Uh, this sounded, first of all, do you have permits from the, uh, Health Department to this?
Yes, we're in the process of that. They said that this was our first step to make sure that we had the approval to have the business in our home, um, before we have, uh, go on to the next step to get approved by the city to have a cottage kitchen license. So this is our first step.
It's supposed to be a cottage kitchen license?
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you. Cottage kitchen, something.
Any other questions from board members?
So I, I'd like to, well, go ahead. I, I'd like to make a, a motion that any approval that we give specifically reference the cottage kitchen. Period. And nothing beyond that, because it sounds like a manufacturing process taking place in the home.
Right, which we don't allow.
So it needs a distinction between the manufacturing process and the cottage chick, cottage.
So contingent on getting that.
Yeah. Bailey, is that the right method?
Uh, in terms of.
Well, confining it to cottage kitchen.
Because you're not allowed to manufacture anything in your.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's following the, uh, standards and conditions outlined for home office and cottage industry within the use table.
Yeah.
The approval would, you know, be contingent on those conditions. So, okay.
I'll make a motion to pre- approve contingent that this is identified as a cottage kitchen under the zoning bylaws.
Second.
Motion's been made. Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion?
Think the planning board ought to get, the planning department ought to get copies of the licenses when they're, uh, they're, they've gotten them. So we have them on file.
From the pub, the Health Department?
From the Department and from a copy of the cottage kitchen license when she gets it.
We normally don't allow, the bylaw doesn't allow manufacturer in the home.
Sorry, what was that?
Uh, our bylaws don't allow for manufacturing the product for resale in the home. That's why we have to get the cottage ki- kitchen.
Right.
So it gets sold outside.
Yeah, because it's sold outside of the home and, yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions that carries.
Thank you so much.
Next item, Mr. Clark.
Case SPRW 2023-18, request for site plan review waiver for AMH Property Maintenance, a home office at 30 Chadwick Lane, Assessors Parcel ID 83-13-8, located in the Residence A zoning district, applicant Aiden Held, 30 Chadwick Lane, Easton Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Okay, is there somebody, you're done. Oh, perfect. Good evening, everybody. Um, so just kind of generally, we're looking for, um, just kind of an explanation, kind of the business. Um, if there's any commercial vehicles that will be on the premises, does any employees, just kind of general information on the business?
Yeah, totally. So it's just me. I'm owner operated. I have about fifteen, fifteen customers that I take care of regularly. Um, I have no commercial vehicles that will be on the property, um, nothing branded. All equipment will be stored away from site, um, in the garage or in the shed. No clients will come to the property. I do full servicing at, uh, other people's properties. Yeah, that's everything.
Any questions for the applicant? Regular home office, so, uh, hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made. Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions that carries. Have a great evening.
Thank you, you too.
All right, next item.
Case SPRW 2023-19, request for site plan review waiver for Positive Direction Counseling, a mental health counseling office at 264 North Main Street, Suite 14. Assessors Parcel ID 14-11-14, an existing structure located in the Commercial Zoning District, applicant Luanne Grimes, 264 North Main Street, Suite 14, Easton Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Hi. Good evening.
Hi.
Um, so kind of just, yeah, general business, will there be, are there any employees, kind of general information like that?
No, it's just, um, just me.
You can use the mic and.
Sure. Hi, um, I'm a licensed social worker, um, and it's a counseling center for adults and children, Positive Direction Counseling. Um, there's another, it's right down the street here. It's two doors away. There's a number of other counseling services in the building. There's no commercial vehicles or anything like that.
Any questions for the applicant?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion's been made. Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions that carries.
Thank you very much.
Uh, case SPRW 2023-20, request for a site plan review waiver for Unusual Machines, Inc., a home office, 54 Hampden Road, Assessors Parcel ID 65-1-0, located in the Residence AA zoning district, applicant Mark Callahan, 54 Hampden Road, Easton Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Good evening. Thank you for your time today. Appreciate it. Um, my name is Mark Callahan. I'm the owner of property at 54 Hampden. I'm also the founder of the company called Unusual Machines. What we do is build small electromechanical pieces of artwork. Sometimes they're dismantling and reassembling antiques, um, appealing to different artistic, uh, um, persuasions. Everything I do is entirely online based. Negotiations with customers, sales are all online avenues. I'll agree to make something for the customer, um, seeking permission to establish the business to make these things in the garage. When I go to deliver these to the customer, I bring it down to the UPS store and they pack and ship. There's no retail sales, no customer interface on the property. Um, I have no commercial vehicles. There's only one employee, that's myself. Um, can I answer any other questions?
Anybody? Yeah, or members?
I don't need that. We were just a little confused on that you're doing the work in the garage studio. So are you considering yourself, so is that manufacturing or are you an artist?
Consider myself an artist because everything I build is custom arrangement with one customer. Next customer might want some different configuration of it or a different design.
But you're not doing manufacturing piecework or building equipment. You're doing artistic.
Yes, work. That's right.
Any, uh, further questions, board members?
So the, the question was whether, it's not a home office because you're working in your garage and you said there was manufacturing involved. So we're a little confused.
We're just. Explain a little bit.
A little confused about that.
All of the work is done inside the house where I do the designs on the computer, I interface with the customers, uh, online. That's all in the house.
Okay.
Garage is a separate building. It's a two car garage. It's very convenient for me to work with the tooling out in the garage. I've got a small lathe, a small milling machine where I can cut pieces of aluminum to fit. It's much more convenient to have the, the dirty tools and any spray painting out in the garage than in the house. It's also quieter, too.
How big do these, kind of like, how big do the objects, the artwork?
Didn't want to bring in some demonstration pieces. Um, one of the things I'm working on now is building a chessboard. We're actually machining the chess pieces on that type of scale. Um, I've built, um, I built a, a display case for some jewelry with an opening lid. I've built some powered, uh, music boxes, that sort of thing.
Kind of like smaller?
Yeah, uh, small little box type of things. And you do the designs yourself? Yes, I do.
Okay.
I think it has this muster with the artistic part on it. Yeah, just fine.
That's what it does. Yeah.
Uh, any further questions from the board? Hearing none. Want to entertain a?
Motion to, uh, pro- approve.
Second.
Second, motions were made, motions were seconded. Any further discussion?
I think this qualifies, I think this qualifies as an artist studio which is allowed under the.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions, carries unanimously.
So if you're talking.
Good luck.
Next item.
Case SPRW 2023-21, request for site plan review waiver for Bell Blue, a home office at 30 Judy Lane, Assessors Parcel ID 46-39-16, located in the Residence A zoning district, applicants Chelsea, Kayla, and Lynn Raleigh, 30 Judy Lane, Easton Meadow, Mass. 01028.
All right, are the applicants, I mean, here or?
Hi, how is everyone?
Very good. Um, so just kind of generally, I'm not sure if you've already, uh, heard so far, but just kind of explain a little bit about what the business is about, if you'll have any commercial vehicles on the property. Um, you know, anything, any other employees, anything of that nature.
Yeah, so Bell Blue is going to be an online retail business selling women's clothing strictly on, online, no customer contact whatsoever, no commercial vehicles or anything, just selling women's clothing online, working from the home office.
And will any of the product come to the house and then be shipped out, or is it all, everything's online?
Online.
Okay. Does any board members have any questions for the applicant?
Motion to approve.
Motion.
To approve.
A second.
Motion's been made. Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions that carries. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Case SPRW 2023-22, request for a site plan review waiver for Renew Health LLC, a physical therapy and wellness service office at 280 North Main Street, Suite 10A, Assessors Parcel ID 14-12-F, an existing structure located in the Commercial Zoning District, applicant Brianna Almeida, 82 Minichog Heights, Ludlow, Mass. 01056.
Hi, again, I feel like we were just here.
Yeah, so you're pretty familiar with this, so just kind of a quick refresher for folks maybe listening at home.
Sure. Um, I'm Dr. LaSala Almeida, and this is my twin sister and business partner.
Dr. Brianna Almeida.
And, uh, we are an existing business already, um, on Shaker Road in Easton Meadow. And, um, with our business, we have grown pretty significantly, and so we are moving office spaces, um, to allow for that growth.
Seems like, I know we've, we saw them just not too long ago, so I don't know if anybody had any questions from the board? Uh, do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions?
Thank you. Great evening.
Next item. Yeah, you're getting a workout there.
Approval's not required. Case ANR 2023-04, request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to require subdivision approval under subdivision control law for the conveyance of land known as parcel 1A, a 0.08 plus or minus acre lot from 41 Edmund Street, Assessors Parcel ID 16-116-B, to 33 Edmund Street, Assessors Parcel ID 16-117-B, located or both located in the Residence C zoning district, applicant Chris Dyer, 33 Edmund Street, Easton Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Good evening. So identify yourself for the record.
I'm Michael Smith, Smith Associates Surveyors, um, owner. And basically, we're just transferring a small rectangular trip, uh, strip from one parcel to the other.
Doesn't look too complicated.
Any questions for, or representative?
Make a motion to endorse.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions that carries. Next item.
Case ANR 2023-05, request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to require subdivision approval under sub- subdivision control law for the creation of new parcel A, a 1.11 plus or minus acre lot, and new parcel B, a 0.92 plus or minus acre lot from existing property known as 90 Hampden Road, Assessors Parcel ID 65-4-10, all located in the Residence AA zoning district.
Same situation here, subdividing the property into, uh, two separate lots or conform with the zoning regulations.
Pretty standard one. Um, any questions?
Motion to, uh, motion to approve endorsement or to endorse the plan. Second.
Motion's been made. Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions that also carries.
Thank you guys.
Have a great evening. All right, so now we can move into our.
If he wants to stay, we have a plan. If he wants to stay.
Oh, uh, Mike, Mike, Mike.
Mr. Smith.
Uh, we have the.
Need to sign on.
Oh, we, we have the plans that we could sign them at the, uh, end if you'd like to stick around or? Hey, sorry. Uh, I think, yeah. You know, it's.
I'm with you.
All right.
Going up well.
Definitely. Have a great. All right.
All right, under public hearings, case SP-2023-02, request for special permit amendment to remove special condition number 12 of special permit 2012-04, HCRD Book 19308, page 49, granted to 13 North Main Street, Parcell's ID 27-37-0 and 27-38-0, located in the Business Zoning District, applicant Pride Operating LLC, Care of GPM Investments LLC, 1410 Commonwealth Drive, Suite 202, in North Carolina, 28403, continued from 4/18/23 and 5/16/23.
Okay, uh, do we have the representative or the applicant here this evening? Want to open things up?
No, they, they.
They withdraw.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yes.
Um, the applicant submitted a request for withdrawal without prejudice, and that was sent to the board with, uh, via email. Uh, we didn't bring hard copies for you tonight, so.
Okay. I did, I did see that, yes. So I was confused too. Um, so does that mean, should we make a?
What means a formal motion?
Formal motion, yeah. Um, so just procedurally, should we technically close the public hearing portion?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion.
Unless there's anybody who would like to.
There's nothing to discuss.
There's nothing to discuss.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made. Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions that carries. Okay.
I'll make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw, make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw their request without prejudice.
Motion has been made. Motion has been seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes. So I would like to ask the planning director if he's gotten any guidance from Pride, um, on how they intend to move forward with this condition, given that they will not be in compliance with the special permit.
So, um, Don, there's been no, uh, correspondence other than what I've sent to the board. I, I don't know that they'd be out of compliance with the special permit in terms of, um, the operation itself. This condition hasn't been relevant to the operation for, uh, ten years or so. Um, and it was just kind of in there as an error, and that's why they came to the board in the first place. So, um, I don't think there's any issue with the, the condition there as it is, and there's really no violation on their part.
It wasn't part of the special permit when it was voted on, so they're not, they're not outside the special permit.
Yeah, okay. All right, we have a motion to withdraw without prejudice. Uh, any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions that carries. Okay, uh, next item, Mr. Clark?
Case Site 2023-03, request for site plan review approval for the construction of a recycling center and associated site improvements at Deer Park Drive, Assessors Parcel ID 11-6-4A, located in the Industrial Garden Park Zoning District, applicant Charles G. Arment Jr. and William T. Arment, 47 Warehouse Street, Springfield, Mass. 01118, continued from 4/18/23 and 5/16/23.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And the rest of the board, Josh Levine, Josh Levine from Levine Law in Easton Meadow. Thank you for having us back. I appreciate it. Uh, as an initial matter, this is the last meeting. Uh, at the request of the board, uh, servants and VHB as consultant filed a request for determination of applicability with the Conservation Commission, uh, and that decision was provided to the board. It was a negative determination, uh, which means that further conservation restrictions will not be put into place. Uh, specifically, CONCOM said that there will be work within the buffer zone, uh, but protected areas will not be impacted. Uh, so there are no further restrictions required. Uh, second, VHB put together a series of aerial photographs that were provided to the board, uh, and I hope to put to rest any questions about the, uh, what trees were cleared or not. Uh, a- as you can see in the pictures, uh, as far back as 1990 is the first picture, uh, probably taken by a, a plane or an old satellite, uh, but you can see the parcel being farmed. There's a tractor going across, uh, this land, uh, and this is before Deer Park Drive was actually in place. Um, and you can see in subsequent photographs after 1990 that there was, uh, some land coverage, but there was never tall trees. You can see, uh, I have a black and white copy, so it's not as, as good, but you can see on, uh, the pictures that were provided that there was ground coverage, but there's clearly trees around it and on the, uh, railroad, railroad parcel, but not on the parcel that had issued today. Um, and the third, there was also a updated traffic study provided, uh, that was provided today, uh, and it reflects on the previous questions of the board on how many trips would be put, uh, would be added by this construction, uh, and, uh, John Furman from VHB is here today. If you have any questions on that, or if you would like that presented. And, and finally, as for the train, uh, I don't know if we'll hear from people about the train today, uh, but I, I can say, hey, to my mind, nothing has changed. I actually was on YouTube today and I watched a video of the, uh, track refurbishments that are being done coming up from East Windsor. Uh, you can see the piles of concrete ties being put in, the new road crossings, uh, and this video was posted in 2021. Uh, so there's been progress, there is progress, and, uh, the train is coming. I hear from Enfield today, uh, I, I hope that they get a trail somewhere, but I don't anticipate it being on this track. Uh, I can't speak for the train company. We've been told that the train, the plan is to come out right to the border and then across in our parcel. Uh, this train, it's a, it's a boon for business. Uh, it's an environmental boon, and it will save a lot of wear and tear on the streets, uh, in our town and Easton Meadow as well as in Connecticut. Um, so, uh, thank you for your time, and, uh, I'm here to answer any questions. And again, I have John Furman here if there's any questions for, on the, uh, environmental or traffic side.
Yeah, the train was going to be my first question, just to update on that.
He already bought a locomotive.
Sorry.
I think he already bought a locomotive.
Was there somebody, part of the property that recently purchased a locomotive, um, for that?
Uh, I would have to look to my clients. I, I know that there was some discussion of that, but I don't know if that has happened yet.
So it's progressing along in the man, there, there hasn't been any changes of the, you know, it's progressing as.
Oh, the, the train is.
It's originally proposed.
Train is fully, uh, anticipated part of this plan. Uh, it is, uh, not integral, but it is ideal. And, uh, it is fully part of the plan to, to come in.
Does the board have, uh, before we open it to the public, does the board have any questions?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, hearing and seeing none. Um, I'm going to open it up to the public, so if anybody would like to, um, come up. This time. I'll also see, make sure if anybody's on Zoom, you can raise your hand.
Got one, John.
We go. You're putting a one in. So what we're going to do this evening, um, just because there's multiple projects still in front of us and in. Oh. Listen, she declined, okay. Um, but this goes for this, this public hearing and then the. But this goes for this this public hearing and then the rest of the public hearings that we have. We're gonna institute just a two-minute rule. We're gonna have a timer up here. Just so that we can, it allows everybody that would like to speak to be able to speak in a reasonable time. Into that, so that everybody's projects could be presented this evening in a timely fashion. So is there anybody? That would like to speak on this public hearing? Hearing and seeing none. I'm gonna bring it back to the board. Any questions or?
Yeah, I just want to say one. Is that Will in the back?
I don't believe Will's going to be here.
Charlie then?
Charlie is here.
Hi, Charlie.
And Bill.
I just want to say we're getting killed up with ten-wheelers on Pease Road. I don't know. I followed one up to your place the other day. I went down to check the place out. I followed one in there. I don't know. Are they coming dumping stuff off or are they picking up at your place? Or is there a project going on? Is there? A canary, I'm sorry. Pease Road, the dump trucks, it's really increased big time. Is there a project going on somewhere close? I don't know about.
Not from us.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so it must be something else going on still. Okay, cool. I went down, I went down the other day. Place was busy as heck. Yeah, it's great. Just for our friends at VHB, wherever you might be, hi. So the first. Copy. We got. Of the traffic assessment. A number of us had real concerns about what the the description of the current roadway and area. And it looks like you just, instead of changing it to be more accurate, you just deleted some of that language. So do you want to address that? Because these are permanent records.
Sure.
So ten years from now, someone says, oh, what were they thinking? And they'll be able to see.
I can certainly address that.
Okay.
My name's John Furman. I'm the office manager for the Springfield office of EHB. Filling in for our traffic engineer tonight. I'm actually the engineer of record for the site plan. So. The traffic study that you have in front of you has a number of updates to it. Number one on the list was the classification of the roadways. We had firmly formally said that the roadway was in Deer Park was industrial. And at that last or first meeting, it was characterized that it was a kind of a mix of of uses in there. So we basically just clarified that and just added in a statement that it was. It's it's an industrial. Development by classification, but it has a number of uses in there, and I think we called out a couple.
So where is that?
Really asking me where it is. I believe it is in our section. Existing conditions assessment. The primary land uses along Deer Park Drive are industrial by nature due to the industrial garden zoning overlay. However, offices and a daycare facility are present on this roadway. Those sidewalk or bicycle facilities are provided along this road.
Yep. Well, just just one more thing, just so just so that people in the audience might know. So people in the audience might know. So there was the request that. It go to the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission take action. So perhaps we can hear from Mr. Mitchell. What that means specifically. And then I'm sure the question will be asked, well, does the state then need to be involved until look at this? So you can answer that as well.
So the Conservation Commission issued a negative determination. I don't have the precise one in front of me.
It's right here.
Negative three determination. I think it was already kind of outlined by Attorney Levine. That the. Work describing the request is within the buffer zone as fine in the regulations, but will not alter the area subject to jurisdiction under the act. Therefore, said work does not require the filing of a notice of intent subject to the following conditions, if any, and.
Did we have conditions to be?
They had no conditions within the meeting additional to. That approval.
And I would like to volunteer, John, to speak again on this because there was some previous. Previous notice of intent and John can speak. Engineer speak on that.
Engineers. John Furman again. So I actually presented at the Conservation Commission and we did request an RDA. And a negative determination was issued. One of the supporting features of that request was that a notice of intent. Was filed previously for the project and we presented that to the commission. It was a natural gas processing facility. I had the plans there. I had the notice of intent. And when you looked at those plans, the building placement that we show on our plans is. Not exact, but it's extremely close to where that other proposed building was. When you couple that with the impact that we have. Our impact is located between the fifty-foot buffer and the one-hundred-foot buffer. There is no direct impact to any wetlands. And the benefit we have for the project is that currently stormwater flow goes across the gravel. To a low point in the middle of the site and then goes into a wetland. And that water is unfiltered and it's it has no treatment to it. It's part of this project. We are raising the site. We're putting a curb up and we're constructing a stormwater facility. So as I explained to the commission. That discharge of that design point has zero flow after this development. So that water which is going into a wetland area is now not. And it's being treated and it's being infiltrated into the ground. So there's a lot of benefits to this project in addition to that.
And that prior notice of intent that was filed prior to the Arment zoning it. That had stayed involved. That's part of the process.
The experience is with us is that the use of the structures is beneficial, especially when you get the twenty-five-year storm. People don't realize that it actually really helps out. Instead of flowing the water through the dirt and the mud and all that. And I think the public ought to know that also this requires them. As usual with a construction site for silk fences and things like that, just the regular, no construction conditions.
Is there, I know some people come in, come out. Is there anybody public hearing is? Anybody?
Lori Parker's hand is still up.
Yeah, I see. I think she had tried to.
Try her one more time, but.
Yeah.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi, hi, how are you? Lori Parker, one oh five Cottage Road, Enfield. Sorry, I didn't get it working.
That's okay.
I just wanted to first ask if everybody had had a chance to read the engineering report from Victoria. Who will? In particular about the. Wetlands determination because on one of her. Points on page three, item number ten. She says the two hundred-foot riverfront area associated with the Jawbrook Reservoir. Is within the Wetlands Protection Act area. So I just want to make sure that that determination did consider. Her points in that. Report.
Hearing for the planning board, not the Conservation Commission. Does I believe that I'm hearing correctly, these materials were given to the Conservation Commission? So we didn't, we were not in receipt of those of the.
Oh.
No, it's.
It is.
You have, I'm sorry.
Okay. So. Basically. That was, you know, brought before the Conservation Commission and already voted upon. So that's not something that this body is. Reviewing in terms of conservation. They would have already done that in that meeting. So if you miss that, it's kind of already done at this point. And that's not something that this body can really do anything about at this point. So this public hearing is separate from that.
Okay, so those those questions or points would need to be brought to them and it's already passed.
Correct.
But if that area is in the Wetlands Protection Act. Area, then. I don't know, maybe we could raise the issue and and make sure that. Those guidelines are followed.
Mr. Sheriff, could you respond to this?
Sure.
Can we just go through her testimony first?
Yeah, would you be able to just finish all the point kind of in one?
Okay.
Allow.
Yeah, just the other thing in regards to the train, it was my understanding from. What I heard from our state representative is that the. The lease was not automatically gonna be renewed to the leaseholder of the railway in August. So we're not even sure that. They will still have the lease after this summer. And I did read the new traffic study. And it looks like they're talking a difference of eight trucks. So. I just wanted to know, is that is that accurate that the only the difference in the rail? Is only gonna make a difference in eight truck trips per day? And. Is the amount of processing gonna increase or is it or is that railway really just to save? Eight, excuse me, eight trucks a day? The other thing I noticed in the traffic study, there were a couple areas where there was a level of service F. At some of those intersections. So combined with this development and the Chestnut Street, it seems like the traffic. I don't know how much worse than an F it can get. The other.
I'm seeing about about two minutes in my head here. So just.
Okay.
I'm kind of close that if there's any last.
No, I just wanted to make sure that the engineer's letter was received by all and there there were many points in there, but the. The Conservation one really stuck out. I also had submitted a recording of noise that a neighbor submitted. Just wanted to make sure that you heard that. And. I I think that that's about it for now.
Thank you. Truly, the United North. Yeah, I want to. I do, yeah, John Furman. We had received a report downloaded off the town's website and. Addressed, I went through every point on the letter and I did not put a response letter together because a lot of them are just not valid. From a professional perspective. The reviewer of this is a Connecticut PE. It's not a Massachusetts PE. So there's an unfamiliarity with the Massachusetts rules and regulations. One of them being the Wetlands Protection. The reservoir does not have a two-hundred-foot riverfront protection associated with it because it is not considered a riverfront. Or is that considered a river? The two-hundred-foot buffer applies to rivers flowing water. And three-ten CMR, the regulation that regulates that says that when that water enters a body of water. Buffer stops. So that doesn't apply. As far as the wetlands, we've talked about that. We delineated them. We went to the Conservation Commission and we're set with that. From the traffic perspective, what was said is true. The lack of the rail at this point will save or will increase traffic. Eight eight truck trips per day. And then that will. Diminish when the rail comes in. That is basically one truck per hour during the day. Our operating hours for accepting trash are, I believe, seven to three. So we missed the evening peak. The evening peak is from four fifteen to six fifteen. So at after three o'clock, we don't accept any other vehicles. So we have no impact on the on the evening peak. As far as the level of service, table six in our traffic study. Has a capacity analysis for the four intersections that were analyzed. What was failed to mention is that those level of Fs are already levels of Fs on the existing analysis. We have no impact to them. The level of Fs now, the level of Fs. So you can't get any worse than an F. So it's, you know, it's what it is. Thank you. Any other? Public comments? Hearing none. I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made, motion has been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
So we've discussed some possible conditions, but I don't think we've actually kind of spelled them out. So one. As pointed out by the people from Enfield. I think the original hours of operation, you say we're gonna be six to two. They can't be. Corning Town bylaws, so they need to be seven to three. So that should be a condition. And I think at least for the foreseeable future, we should put a. Try to put a limit on the number of trucks, daily truck. Deliveries, whatever we're gonna refer to them as sixty. And no more. And then once the issue of the train is decided one way or the other. I would ask that you come back in and we could reconsider. One way or the other. So. Those are the only two that I have come to mind.
So you mean.
Could I just address the seven AM? So if my understanding is that that's based on three sixty-six three. And I I read the bylaw this morning and if we're talking about. Power equipment section, all the power equipment will be inside. So I don't know how much the sound would carry. And to me, this is to address sound that would be outside and I. I defer to the board, of course, but that would be my understanding of the bylaw and I think sound would should be constrained by the bill.
You you just heard Mr. Punderson talk about all the truck traffic going down Pease Road that. You know, the dumps, the dump trucks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There's a reason it's seven to three.
So I just have a quick question. You mean sixty, so you mean sixty coming in and then and then those sixty get stuff and that fifty come out?
It's sixty truck trips.
Sixty.
Yeah. That's a hundred twenty, sixty in and sixty out.
I do want to say I haven't seen our met truck on Pease Road in quite a while. I just was referring to some extra traffic that's as of late. There must be a project going on. I didn't say it is your. You know, you're causing it. Yeah, I haven't seen your trucks at all. We must have told them to reroute, but it's just, it's it's somebody else I haven't seen before up and down. So they're doing a project, I would have to think.
At two conditions that have been proposed. Would we like to? Vote on them individually or collectively? How would we like to proceed?
Your call.
Then we could probably vote on it together.
I would do it individually.
Or you want to do it, you want to do it individually?
I would.
Okay, I think Pete would like to do it.
And I'll make a a motion that a condition be hours of operation. The. I propose. I move that one condition be that the hours of operation or the hours of truck. Traffic generated by this project be limited to seven to seven AM to three PM.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Can we do that?
Made and seconded.
I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So the original proposed times were six to three, which was.
All right.
Nine hours would, if we're moving the start time up an hour, would it be possible to move the end time back for for the end?
I'm not changing my motion. Just you guys.
I don't, I don't have any problem with it, you know, being offset by an hour later, you know, six o'clock in the morning is early. I mean, for me, it is.
That's the time my kids get me up, but I understand.
I don't have that problem anymore, but I do have the traffic. And I'm not saying that the Pease Road is gonna be used exclusively, but I think for everybody else that those hours would be better. Does that work for you guys?
I I personally don't mind.
We don't live out there.
But we do have a motion on the table.
Vote the motion down and then make a new one.
Amend it.
Yeah.
All right, motion has been made. Any further discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions?
Abstain. I I make a motion that we change the hours from seven to four.
Correct.
Five days a week.
Motion's been made.
Second that one.
And motion has been seconded. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
I I suggest.
Oh, okay. That carries four yeses, one abstention. Okay, I know we had another condition that was proposed.
Yeah, the condition, I'm just trying to be as consistent as possible. I called out the. I I called out the traffic engineer at three thirty Chestnut Street. He said, you're making your bed at three hundred and thirty eight trucks. So their traffic study said no more than sixty vehicles. I put a limit at sixty ve- sixty truck trips a day. That's what their traffic engineer said it would produce.
Would you like to put that in the form of a?
So moved.
Motion's been, motion's been made. There are second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been seconded.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I get paid by the word to speak, so. Just to clarify, the traffic study does say sixty truck trips a day. And until the train is in place, eight tractor trailer trips a day to haul out the refuse that the train would normally pull out when that's put into place.
So amended, I'll amend that, yeah.
Okay, so amended. All right, uh, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
That's four yeses and one abstention. Okay, um, so I don't, there weren't any other conditions that have been proposed on the floor here.
So I'll make a motion to approve the site plan. Make a motion to approve the site plan as submitted um for the recycling center associated site improvements at Deer Park Drive.
Second.
With the.
With the conditions.
With the conditions, second.
All right, motion's been made. Motion has been seconded. Any further discussion on the on the motion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
So, thank you. So I I actually want to compliment Attorney Levine. You went above and beyond everything we asked you to do. You did, you did it in an efficient manner. You did it in a timely manner. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Time of consideration, thank you.
All right. Ready? Ready to go.
Hey. Case site twenty twenty two dash zero seven, request for a site plan review, approval for the construction of a warehouse building and associated site improvements at three thirty Chestnut Street, Sessors Parcel ID eighteen dash thirty eight dash zero on a forty point thirty five plus or minus acre lot in the industrial garden park zoning district. Applicant East Long Metal Redevelopers LLC, twelve sixty Stilton Road, Castasco Way, New Jersey, oh eight eight five four, continued from nine twenty twenty two, eleven fifteen twenty twenty two, twelve twenty twenty two, two twenty one twenty three, three twenty one twenty three, and five two twenty three.
Okay, um, so just sort of as an update, um, we obviously started this in September. We originally voted on this at our May second meeting. We decided to open the public hearing again, um, to reopen it, to discuss um some of the conditions. Um, I would like to make a note, we did receive two public comments within the last few days. One from an attorney from Nutter Associates, I think I'm getting that correctly, who represents um a few folks in the Great Wood neighborhood. So that has been on the record. People can.
Fields of Chestnut.
Fields of, oh, uh, no, that was from.
Great Woods.
Yeah, a few, it was a few um residents of Great Woods. That is online as part of the whole plan you can see online. Um, there was also another resident on Chestnut Street. I am forgetting the name off the top of my head, um, but that. I'm sorry.
Last name is Broad.
Broad, okay. So we received those public comments. So we just wanted to make sure, know that, you know.
Be attached to the.
They'll be attached to minutes. People can view them um at their pleasure. So, okay, so getting that out of the way, um, I think where we're at right now is principally looking at, I know at least one condition, potentially two of the conditions. I think we've all, we've all thought about this quite a bit. We've all spent a lot of time on this. And, you know, I I want at least, before we open it up to the public, I kind of want to get my thoughts out there ahead of time. I have a lot of reservations, didn't obviously voted against the condition that would redirect the traffic to make a right turn towards Shaker and Chestnut. But then voted for the final package, but then we voted to bring this back for further discussion. I think upon further reflection, we have to kind of sit back and think about, I've been on this board for five years. This will be my last meeting, so it's great serving with everybody here. I've never seen a project where we've redirected traffic in such a particular manner as we did um in that vote. And it's for a noble reason. There's a lot of people who are concerned. There's a lot of people who have made dedicated efforts to come to make their voices heard. I I for one, I read everything, so I see the public comments that people submit virtually or or via email to to the planning office. But I I have a real concern um about the perception. And I I don't think, I don't think this is what members of this board were thinking, but the perception that by redirecting the traffic, will it alleviate a group of folks on that street? Yes, clearly. But it will impact other individuals that are on that side of the street. And I think that's part of what the response was um from from Nutter Associates, from the folks in Great Woods. We cannot be in the um business of of at least making it look like publicly that we're sort of picking basically favorites between neighborhoods. We represent the entire community. We have to look for all of their interests. We obviously look very closely at the abutters, whether they're to the west, to the east, to the north, to the south. But I I have a lot of concerns about uh this staying in the project. I I I am in, I'm against it staying in the project. If it is, if it does stay in the project, I do plan to oppose the project because I feel very strongly um that I think this both sets that situation in motion. I think it sets a precedent because what it would mean is that going forward, there's another project in another community. And one of the things that I learned when I first got on here is once you do something on one property, it sort of sets in motion. If another property, if if this property could do it, then another property could do it. And it's what we do here is we we tend to set precedents. Usually they are good precedents. Sometimes they aren't maybe the best precedents, looking back. But we have to keep that in mind. So I I'm not going to encourage the board to go one way or the other. I'm just going to give you my opinion now. Um, and I implore, as you all have for the last few months, just consider all the options. But I thought I I wanted to get my point uh and my opinion kind of on the matter uh across across the table here this evening. So I don't know if anybody else had.
At our last session of this hearing, I didn't oppose uh trying to redirect the traffic because I thought it was unwieldy and unenforceable. Even if you make your curb cuts, however you make them, um, it's not going to work. So I did not vote for that particular condition, although I voted for the other conditions.
Does any other members have any uh comments or questions before we sort of open things up?
Are are we, are we going to invite, are we going to ask the town officials who asked that we reopen this hearing to hear their concerns about the proposed condition?
We can do that as part of the public hearing. If there's no other questions, you want to start with them? Uh, yes, so if um if those officials could potentially come uh forward. I can give a. Uh, do you want to give kind of, yeah, a quick narrative?
So um, the, as a part of the site plan review process, the, all the materials that are sent to the board are sent to all of the department heads that um would need or would have any sort of say and uh or any interest in, you know, adding potential conditions or uh that would like to review it. So we typically send it to fire, police, um, and the public works department as they uh ensure public safety and, you know, to make sure that the roads are suitable for people to drive on. So uh as a part of this project, we did that. And um as there was discussion of these uh conditions by the board, uh, we had a chance to kind of respond to those and um let the board know that there were some concerns with um a couple of um of those conditions that they were discussing. One of them in particular was requiring all traffic to go one direction down Chestnut. That is delineated in the draft notice of decision that I put together for the board um and and the last meeting and it's been online. If you're looking at that, it's conditions of approval five B. And so I had asked them through the town manager to kind of um give some of their points in person um to potentially alleviate any public uh concern surrounding our position on that. So with that, um, I believe all three of those departments are here tonight in some capacity. And so if they are able to um just come up through the chair and uh give any additional comments, I did kind of summarize those in random on April twenty fifth to the board. Uh, that's also been available in writing um for the public and for the board since then, so.
All right.
You're going to fire us up for that? Yeah, hello, everyone. Uh, Mark Furman, Deputy Superintendent Public Works. And uh, just as Bailey discussed, I sent comments based on the. Based on comments, uh, I sent to Bailey and the planning board with the conditions that were placed on the uh approval conditional. Basically referring to be they restricted uh uh accessing, exiting of the property. Um, the original site plan was reviewed uh with unrestricted access and entrance and exit. Um, so with that, we have concerns about infrastructure along those routes and traffic studies that weren't done with that restriction and all going one way. There's crosswalk there and the motor, uh, so that's condition B. It it would, you know, trucks would probably tend to take the rotary and get into town more, causing traffic jams there instead of unequal dispersment of the traffic out of there is what we were thinking DPW wise. And uh, part D, uh, do you have any more questions about B? Similar to your.
Yeah, so, and I'm going to ask the same question of.
Sure.
The fire chief and the police chief. So if the conditions remain as is, do you think this would be a injurious or would it be a negative for the entire town or just that specific neighborhood?
The entire town's infrastructure. Yep.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
Just um, infrastructure wise, turning in one direction and restricting traffic, just the wear and tear on the roads, unequal use and uh.
Do you think it would impact the public safety of the entire town?
Yes, I think they would, trucks would try to find any route they could. That would be to avoid any type of traffic. They might radio to one another, hey, we're going here, that's strapped backed up. Let's go this way, take shortcuts that maybe they wouldn't always do. Yeah.
Thank you.
I would have to think that looking for a shortcut would not include the rotary in the center of East Long Metal, for sure.
Seems seems that way.
So I think that the, what you're looking at is maybe a higher uh density of traffic, high number of trucks going through the center wouldn't happen. Now, one trucker is going to say to the other, that's an experience of going through the road, it's going to say, don't go there. I just think that the access and ingress of one direction is is better for the town. It puts the wear and tear in one spot instead of Chestnut Street West. And it goes through an area, particularly down through the industrial park that is made for the heavier trucks. You know, both Shaker Road and uh.
So can I just, if I can? So I think this form of questioning of a town official in this capacity is not really conducive of uh this review. I think that if the board was will, or if the board was looking to do this kind of thing, they should have done it with the H P when we had them as a uh peer review consultant and maybe had the study um done so that we could see the potential impacts. At this point, what uh Mr. Furman is suggesting is that we do not have the facts. We don't have the ability to say one way or another if that impact would be gr- great for the town or great for the infrastructure. Or if, you know, if those streets could handle the extra capacity. We can all speculate all night, but at this point, um, that that traffic study was never done. And the town officials cannot say one way or another that that is a good thing.
I agree.
And with that, uh, what we do know is that we are forcing traffic to go one way. And um instead of that, it it's it's creating a bottleneck down Chestnut. It's creating a bottleneck down Shaker um both ways. And you also have traffic turning from industrial left onto Shaker on a unrestricted or a a unsignaled intersection where it's just a stop sign and people going forty five miles per hour both ways on Shaker. So I think that public safety wise, um, and I again, I'm not going to speak for the other department heads, but um we have discussed this at length and I have put their thoughts in writing already. And I just, for the interest of time, I just feel like I'm trying to summarize some of the discussions that we've had, so.
Good notion. Thank you.
Me, uh, can I respond?
Sure.
So, Mr. Mitchell, I respectfully disagree with you. So it was the town officials who asked us to reopen the hearing. We reopened the hearing so we could hear their comments. I'm asking questions. I want to get comments. And I'm going to continue to ask questions until or if the chair stops me.
Okay, um, seeing, uh, so I think, I don't, I don't think there's any other, maybe we can keep going, have some other, the other officials come up, maybe address perhaps the questions that have already been been said, been stated. And just give maybe a brief synopsis of sort of what they said uh in their original comments regarding this. Who wants to go next? Or or I'm sorry, if you have any other comments or any other thoughts or things?
The only other thing I had comments to were D and E. Have you dropped those or are we still, that's still a condition that needs a comment? Conditions of approval, D and E for five, uh, conditions of approval. The motorized uh one-way spikes. Those aren't typically used for traffic controls. They're, you know, for security in high security areas and apartment buildings, parking garages. And the motion activated sensors on E, you don't allow third-party connections to signal utilities. Uh, that's that's usually not a good combination, private and public infrastructure. Gets into maintenance and cost and repairs. So those two are also what I commented on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trevor's next. I'll stay right over here if you need me.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Mark Williams. I I, uh, excuse me, I am your police chief. Happy to be here tonight. Thanks for the invitation to to comment on this. Really, uh, a lot of things that have been said so far are really kind of echo what I was thinking. So I really want to reserve the time for the public to comment. Uh, I don't want to necessarily repeat everything, but I will say, um, I'm not a planning board member, never have been, but I, uh, what you said Chairman Torscher regarding your position, I think was well stated and and ought to be considered along the precedent lines, uh, even if it's not appropriate for me to comment on that piece. Everything Mark said about his concerns, I I echo the same concerns. Uh, I saw the letter earlier today from uh Attorney Nutter's office. I thought that also very well stated a lot of the same concerns I have regarding this not um being studied specifically with this pattern. Yes, I I do have concerns about emergency access and public safety.
Thank you.
And yes, I do think that affects all of the town.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Most of you know me, you're a fire chief uh for eleven years now. In the.
In my history as a fire chief, we, and actually before that, I was the fire prevention officer. The fire departments never really commented on traffic flow in the street per se. We, we get the site plan. That's more or less our concern. We deal with the site. Did have some concerns and comments on the site itself initially. But this proposed conditions, we, myself, the fire prevention officer and the deputy reviewed it. And our concern is if a truck's going to go to, wants to go to 91 North and can't go that way, it's in town for a longer period of time. And I believe Mark and both Marks commented on it. Coming out of industrial drive, even in a vehicle, a car is sometimes during the congested times, it's difficult without a traffic light. So you're now, you're going to have a truck, tractor trailer truck, or whatever their vehicles are going to be coming that way. It concerns us. It's the vehicles going to 91 are going to be in town longer, more, more wear and tear on the road. And we don't typically use Chestnut Street as a route to get to anywhere on Benton Drive. Maple Streets are preferred route of traffic. So when it that way, most of that's not going to affect us. We do occasionally go that direction for other, other reasons in the neighborhoods over there. But it's not, it's not our priority. It's not our high call district. The traffic spikes. I reached out to a lot of departments that are part of Western Mass Fire Chiefs and nobody has on for traffic flow control. Like Mark had brought up, they are basically a security measure. Only place I've ever really seen him is at rental car agencies to keep cars going out. I have a concern, somebody's trying to do, get out of there too quick. They stop and then now there's emergency in there and it just affects our access. Sometimes if there's an incident in front of the only way into the lot site. We need to, we have to go in the wrong way sometimes and we're not going to be able to do that if there's traffic, one-way traffic spooks in there. It's a dangerous situation for, for everybody. So that's my comment. I think ultimately adding, you know, restrictions, you know, affects us. We need to worry about more trucks going that direction as well. So I think, you know, ultimately it affects the townwide. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know if the board had any other thoughts or comments that they wanted to make before we open it up to the rest of the general public. Hearing none. So what we'll do is, Hillary, Nina, I'm not sure if you can keep a timer. I want to try to stick to two minutes here. So if people could just come up, maybe line up, I don't know how many. You can have folks come up here if they'd like to comment perhaps with the microphone so that everybody can kind of hear everybody. Just state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. Michael Pell, I'm here as the attorney for the Fields of Chestnut. I've just been talking to Mr. Fitzgerald, who's the attorney for the applicant. Neither one of us have seen this. Is this a law firm or an individual lawyer named Nutter?
No, no, this is a Nutter and Associates.
Okay.
That I.
First of all, when somebody goes behind the backs of the lawyers for both sides, that says something perhaps about what they think of their own merits. Furthermore.
I'm not, excuse me.
Let me, let me speak to the merits. You have not heard me try to be a traffic engineer. A lawyer has no business opining about traffic. And so whatever an attorney said, even if he had shown us the basic courtesy and requirement of copying of the applicant and the chief opponent. I respectfully submit you should disregard what the lawyer said. We hired a traffic engineer to opine upon traffic. That's the way you do it. I just hope you'll disregard whatever it is that lawyer had to say. Thank you very much.
My only, my only comment was just to make sure it was in the record that people knew that it was sent.
And believe me, I'm glad you did because otherwise I wouldn't have known anything about it.
It's also on the website, yes.
Want to tell them our engineers?
Oh, I'm sorry. Our engineer, Bobby showed, we were from MDM consultants. We were hoping you would be here at six. He's running late. We're hoping to get him here by 7:30 and thank you Dan Rullier for reminding me about that. That's obviously the logical conclusion. We do have our traffic engineer and we did want him here to opine about traffic issues. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me attend your meeting. I am not a East Long Meadow resident. I am a Long Meadow resident. I'm here because I wonder.
Could you just identify your name and address for the record?
My name is Linda B C and I live on the corner of Converse Street and.
Dwight?
No, not Dwight.
Laurel? Laurel?
Laurel. Laurel, sorry.
Don't worry.
And I have been watching the reminder to find out what was proposed for the trucks to go through. So I don't really know what that proposal is. But I'm here to tell you that the trucks that come by my house all hours of the night shaking the house, the road is falling apart. It's just pay attention to all of that. It's, it's pretty scary. It's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Hurley, I'm a resident of the Fields. The thoughts of the engineering department as well as the DPW and fire chief and police chief, as much as I have respect for all people in public service, it's based on speculation. Wear and tear on roads shouldn't be the major concern. It should be the quality of life of the people in East Long Meadow and the surrounding communities. It goes without saying, you already have a regulation that says that trucks can't, shouldn't, and hopefully won't go on the rotary because anybody who does is crazy. Goes without saying. So the people in Deepwoods, they're affected much more really than a lot of other people in various areas. But there's going to be truck, truck traffic. The other thing that I think you should take into effect is there's a walking trail on Chestnut that's used by bicyclists, dog walkers, people just want to get out and exercise. And the more you can avoid truck traffic to that area, the better off public safety is going to be. So I understand we all have differences of opinion, et cetera. But as far as my concern, number one, quality of life. Number two, public safety. Number three, wear and tear on traffic is something that's going to happen no matter what, no matter where. So I just hope you take all that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Christina Cooper. I live at 142 Meadowbrook Road. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I know I couldn't sleep at night if I couldn't have had more less time to pull back a little bit hometown of East Long Meadow, be the best I can. I do feel the scale of this proposed warehouse and the resulting increase in traffic is the wrong fit for our small town. I understand the planning board's stance that this is an approved use of land, even though it's a huge warehouse built on spec. So if you don't approve it, we would be vulnerable to being sued as a town. So I wanted to speak to a future site plan review, if you do approve of this tonight, when a tenant is named. Board member George Kingston had stated in my second, pardon, my second meeting that the control of traffic on streets in town is not within the purview of the planning board, but the duty of the town council. And that we could not set traffic rules and regulations for public waves. While Clerk Denver agreed that the town council should look into this, but the industrial site, oh, sorry. But disagrees the planning board cannot set conditions on this particular site. I'm hoping Clerk Denver is correct because my understanding is you're going to use the traffic impact study produced by McMahon Associates estimating the 928 extra vehicle trips a day, including 338 semi-truck trips per day, which represents an increase of 50% increase in semi-truck traffic at the Chestnut Dwight Benton intersection. If you approve that, I'm a little scared and confused. Will that mean that the tenant is allowed to produce that much traffic? Like that's their legal right? Are we allowed to set any kind of limits as the planning board in how many trucks can come in and out of this facility? Can we say that number is too high? Can we say it's better for the town to have?
Ten or fifteen seconds.
Okay. So I propose that you consider a condition before you approve this entire site plan to say that we reserve the right as the planning board to limit the amount of trucks that, whatever tenant is found to commute it out of that facility and to make, to say it's going to be less than 303 semi-trucks and less than 128 vehicles. So please consider that as a possibility to save us in the future. Thank you.
I'm Gail Moran. I live at 226 Shaker Road. So my concern, listening to all this, is that just the previous topic of the railroad. You approved that they can only have 60 trucks from seven to four. But this facility would be 24/7, which I heard in the reminder, the man said 188 trucks a day. So how can one be approved for only 60 from seven to four and this one can go?
So I just want to quickly clarify, we did not set any times yet. Now that was, the difference with that project was there was an actual individual company that was already there. This does not have an actual tenant yet. So then there would be a process to set those type of hours if this is approved.
Then that might not be the case then because that what concerns me, living on Shaker Road. I live on the other opposite side of Chestnut. So hopefully, you know, trucks wouldn't go past my house. But still, I'm, I'm right there, not too far from the corner. And the other thing that struck us living there, we've been there 38 years. So it's not new to us, almost 39. So, you know, we've seen the gas station and the other things is that, you know, there's a manufacturing facility there. It was there when we moved in and, and that was fine, just like American saw. But this is, if it's true about a reading, this would be a distribution center, which is much different than manufacturing. You know, American saw has trucks, they're, you know, four or five, not many. But a distribution is a completely different animal. So just want to, I think that's probably been said before, but I wanted to bring that up. That's it. I take it.
Hi, my name is Neil Williams. I live at 62 Prospect Hills Drive, East Long Meadow. Been there for 27 years and I've missed earlier hearings on this. I'm a little bit out of the loop, hot out of the loop. Is this a moneymaker for the town?
It would, they would have to pay taxes like every other property.
Are we being held by the applicant, hostage by the applicants to approve this or be sued?
No.
No.
No, no, no.
Good. So I know you've heard about increased traffic. You've heard about horrible rush hours, heard about more traffic than ever. You've heard about nobody's going to go through the traffic circle. They're going through the traffic circle and that'll tie up rush hour for, you know, hour to get the truck out of there that gets stuck. Conflicting estimates on traffic volume for this warehouse. It doesn't really matter what they say. Traffic here is going to get worse, much worse. Not a little worse, much worse. I've lived a long time now and I've learned a few things along the way. And I'm, I know I'm just another old geezer, going to tell you how the good old times were. No, I, things change. I know that. I'm going to tell you what the future is. I'm not going to tell you what the past is. One thing I've learned that never changes, when somebody wants something from you, they'll say anything and they'll do anything to get it. This has always been the way of the world. It's just how business works. So these folks who are telling you that, oh, we're going to come at this hour and not at this hour, we're going to take this road and not that road. It doesn't really matter. Once they get what they want, everything they ever said or ever promised is not going to happen. The opposite will happen. It could be your money, your car, your timeshare, your house, whatever people promise you. Once the cash is delivered or the goods are delivered, forget anything that was promised. One of those, for most individuals, we get stuck in a situation like that. We hire a lawyer like Mr. Pell.
Couple seconds, like I'm done, I'm done.
We hire Mr. Pell and you can get your way out. But this warehouse project, there's no way out of this for us. We're stuck forever. The town of East Long Meadow is going to be ruined forever by this project. So I hope you find another use for this. You regret this decision to approve a warehouse. I hope you find a better use of the land than that. Send them to Springfield.
So I, I want to make sure we're just clarifying. So this was, this was approved. This is simply a reaffirming, this is a, just considering the conditions that we had previously set. So just want to make sure that that is clear, a referendum on this.
John.
I'm done. I have a time to say it.
I'm Margaret Gorle. I live at the building Chestnut and I was mentioned by Mr. Denver. I'm not going to talk about the comments that you made about me because it'll take the focus off of the important issue.
Thank you.
Improving the site plan. And I'm going to stick to what I know best. I'm a physician. I'm also a medical researcher. So I'm going to talk about what we need to worry about with health effects, especially on the young population. That has not been mentioned very much in these testimonies. The air quality report was helpful, but it didn't cover air pollution effects in the highest risk populations. Children, pregnant women, the elderly and people with chronic lung disease. The most common effect we will see is worsening asthma, COPD and reactive airway disease. Air concentrations of particulate matter are correlated with more asthma exacerbations and hospital emissions for asthma. A child who uses an inhaler occasionally during exercise now may reduce participation in outdoor sports after the particulate matter level goes up. This could add to childhood obesity rates with more children becoming inactive and gaining weight. It also means a child who is playing outdoors and giving mom some time to herself is now indoors more often and driving mom stress the whole up. Long distance runners on Congress Street and William Street will be inhaling more diesel emissions. It's not a solution for them to drive out of town to find a new place to run because they'll breathe in diesel fumes and standing traffic behind the trucks to get there. You don't need asthma or COPD to react to particulate matter. More common condition is reactive airway disease, which is an asthma-like response to irritants to pollen or air pollution. Will have a triple threat during the winter holidays because the particulate matter level will increase from more trucks. And cold air and bronchitis will also increase. They're also triggers. The threshold for reactive airway disease events to occur will decrease as the baseline particulate matter level increases. And some people may have more events more often until they're diagnosed with asthma. So overall, we've heard a lot of testimony. We need to think about the health effects and all the effects on the young people because of the future of this community. We've heard very little about them and.
It's probably, we've got just a few more seconds. Just want to give you.
But I stand by my comment, but I still think that we could have more testimony about families, children, the pregnant women and younger people who haven't been addressed.
What I would say to people is, you know, this will then have a whole nother public hearing like this. Once, once the tenant would come in, I implore, I know that myself, George, this is our last meeting. There will be two openings. If people believe strongly and they're held convictions, step up, stand up, get involved. Simple as that. We, we cannot change bylaws. We cannot change rules in the middle of a process. But after this, if this town feels necessary to restrict future development, to change the bylaws that we have, that we, that have already been created, then I encourage people to get involved with that. And I would welcome that.
Additionally, to address your concerns about the one problem, so to speak. The first condition is all idling trucks on the site are required to utilize exhaust filters. So the problem adjacent to the, immediately, immediately adjacent to the area should be a lot less than what you're thinking.
Immediately adjacent, but I'm thinking about the runners.
It's already been approved, so there's not much that can be done regards to the truck traffic.
Can't be done, but it's, it's going to be a problem that keeps on going.
I understand that. I didn't vote for it.
Okay.
My name is John Burnham. I live at 82 East Lee Street, sorry. Like someone else, I'm a little out of the loop, just, just really starting to get involved in understanding what's going on. It sounds like, so this is a done deal, like this.
We are discussing the conditions and this is a vote, this would be a vote potentially to reaffirm.
Okay.
But depending on the combination. But depending on the combination of conditions.
So I guess I'm, I'll offer perspective, we're, we're new to town, we just moved here about a year and a half ago. We love East Long Meadow, it's been great so far. I, you know, I hear, heard some other folks talking about officials talking about the traffic that will be caused by these conditions. We typically will come down Pease Road. I can tell you it's, it's a nightmare at times to try to take a left off of Pease Road. I think the whole town uses the post office, so to create additional congestion going down Shaker by industrial will be a nightmare. So I think these conditions should not be part of that. And I don't know if I hope that means that there's a chance at some point this whole project will get canceled. But it just, I, I don't, I don't understand how we can have three hundred some odd trucks traveling through these small roads and not think that that's going to hurt the town. I know you mentioned you represent all of the people that live in the town.
Not just me, we all.
Oh yeah, you all represent. I, I haven't talked to very many people that actually want this. So I guess I don't understand, if you represent all of the town.
Good evening. My name is Jermaine Kangram and I've lived in East Long Meadow my entire life, went to all the schools in town. And I live on Westwood Avenue. Something that I just wanted to bring to your attention is at the end of Benton is a very large school bus garage that services East Long Meadow and Long Meadow. And the site for this project is in the backyard of the high school in town. You might know that field from watching the fireworks on the Fourth of July. I'm really concerned with the bus routes and the timetables for delivering our students to the local schools for both towns. And that's basically where my position is. That that's another factor that I'm hoping that people consider. And I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
I'm here as a citizen, Ralph Page, one thirty seven Pease Road. I have been to all your meetings, I've listened. I was a little taken aback by the right turn only. We talked in, you talked in length about the intersection, the intersection being reduced from a E to an F. And that was without all the truck traffic going there. Now, all of a sudden, you know, you were asking the developer, how do get back to an E? How could we do this? How could we make the intersection better? And then you turned around and said, well, that doesn't make a difference to me because now we're going to send every truck that way. Now, every truck has got to take a right turn. You heard from a professional truck driver how difficult that right turn is. And you basically said, great point, you know, we like listening, yes, that makes sense. But now we're not going to listen to you and we're going to send every truck that way. You know, you heard me talk about the walking trail and the trucks going by it. Well, not only did you say, hey, that's a great point, we're going to try to do this. But now you send them to the right, you send them over and down Industrial Drive, right past another crossing. So now it's twice that they have to deal with it. I mean, it, it just didn't make sense to me. Yes, there is going to be some truck traffic going to the left, yes, to the right. If you force everyone to go to the right, I, I am certain if you bring the traffic study engineer back in, he's going to tell you it's also going to increase truck traffic going into the rotary. It only makes sense if you go from sixty percent of the traffic going to a hundred percent, you're going to go from ten percent going into the rotary to fifteen percent. I mean, the other thing, I just heard someone up here talking about all the particulates and all in the air and how the truck traffic. Now you're making them drive two miles to go around. If that's your concern, you're extending it.
We've got a couple seconds left.
Thank you, I appreciate that, but I think I've hit on most everything. The only thing I would like to comment on is the rail trail and the motion sensor. There was an individual sensor only for the rail trail, not tied in with any lights. And it was only to detect people walking on rail trail. Thank you.
So I'm the one who came up with the motion to make all the traffic go right.
Yes.
Okay. And to make the traffic go, you know, down Benton Industrial, Shaker, so forth and so on. Because meeting after meeting after meeting, what did we hear? We heard the residents along Chestnut Street and Fields of Chestnut talk about how overburdened they would be with truck traffic. So I was listening, listening, listening and listening again and came up with that idea. So that is why I came up with that motion. I certainly respect Mr. Bolduc. I have to tell you, he was still the absolute best spokesperson at any public hearing that we've had on this issue or none. So we did take a lot of what he talked about and we put into motions as well. So we did listen, we did incorporate some of his recommendations. And I also were listening to the residents as well.
So my question is, if we were listening and all, why didn't we ask the traffic engineer to do this study based on a hundred percent of the traffic going through that intersection? Because, I mean, not only did we have an engineer, but then we had a review of it. And not once was it ever thought that, hey, we're going to put a condition in at the very end and that condition is going to override what we've already done for an engineer.
And as a.
And if the board had wanted to do that and asked the engineer to consider it, that would have been one thing. But it wasn't.
And as a past planning board member and planning board chair, you know we still have the opportunity to do that. Correct?
So you've.
Correct.
Public hearing, you're about to vote on this, you've already put this in stipulation in. That's why the town came back and said, we don't feel this is correct.
And that's great and I'm happy to.
That's why we're standing here tonight and.
And that's why I was thrilled that the town officials, most, that most deal with public safety, came here and expressed what their thoughts were. I felt it was important for the town to hear what our experts, the town experts felt about that proposal. So I was more.
Appreciate.
And I was more than happy to reopen the hearing, be able to hear them.
Great, thank you.
I know we had somebody going up. Sorry, there was a woman that had the.
Hi, Ms. Lauren Life, thirty six Fields Drive. I want to applaud all of you for your hard work. I served on a education board for six years, I understand how hard it is to please everyone. I just want you, first of all, I want to applaud Peter Henderson for voting no on the project. I think it was very sexy. I'm sure all of you have been there. Today, I was driving on, and I am not a traffic study person, but I was driving on Chestnut Street to Benton. I saw my life flash before me as a tractor trailer came around from Long Meadows Side or Dwight and nearly nipped me. And I know we've all been in that position at some point in our cars, but it really made me think, oh my God. Like, how in the world are traffic trailer, trucks going to come this way for the safety of everyone? Not just East Long Meadow people, not just people at the Fields of Chestnut, not just people in East Long Meadow, anyone traveling on those roads. I have no idea if there's going to be money put aside to reconstruct those intersections. And I think about the intersection as I go down on the other side of Chestnut Street and I turn right onto Shaker. I can't imagine that all of those traffic trailers are going to come in there and it's going to be safe for anyone. I realize you might vote on your last night. Jonathan, you mentioned you might change your vote about something. Like, I realize you've already passed this, but I couldn't sleep tonight if I didn't tell you about my little story of almost getting nipped by a tractor trailer truck today.
My name is Tim Biggins, I live at two fifty three Prospect Street. We're a very busy corner, you might be familiar, Prospect and Chestnut. And I have two, two observations. Once, I've noticed a lot more semi tractor trailer truck traffic coming up from the rotary on Prospect and then taking a right down the hill on Chestnut. It's not a turn that they can take without going into the opposing lanes, it's just physically not possible. And I think this might be a consequence, just conjecture on my part, of navigate systems heading them in a less traveled way. But it's, it's noticeable, we've seen a huge increase in truck, truck traffic coming down Chestnut from Camden, Connecticut, coming up that way. I've always felt that truck traffic should be prohibited from these residential roads and brought up one ninety to Route two twenty to come to the industrial park. But that's a separate issue. The second issue I have is the proposed tenant eventually being, there's been some conjecture that it'd be Amazon. Amazon has declared that they're going all electric. And they're going to bring in electric trucks, electrics, semi tractor trailer trucks. Where are they going to charge these? I've been living in town for thirty years, National Grid has now inherited the electrical system, it's not very good. The, the governor or the attorney general forced them to put some money into infrastructure, but it's not going to meet the charging requirements of three hundred and thirty eight monsters, number of additional semi tractor trailers in this town. So that's something that should be considered if there's a way to bring these issues up again in another round, I don't know. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Cherry Williams, I live at sixty two Prospect Hills Drive. I'm just wondering, I'm sure there are a lot of people out here like me who read the reminder and saw one story on this whole project. This is a couple weeks ago. I know we voted to not have a town hall anymore, but to have a town council and that the town council has approved this project.
No, no.
No.
No. This board.
My question to you is, is there any way that the town people can have a referendum to let you know?
Process, so there are, the only things that are voted on are changes to the charter. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. What would be the next step would be appealing the decision.
And you said something about you can't change horses midstream, we couldn't change the bylaws before this project is approved?
Well, I meant changing the bylaws, so if a project comes up, your project A, you can't rewrite the bylaws in the middle of it because you're like, oh jeez, you know, we can't have project A for whatever it is. You can't do that midstream. And my, my, my comment was that if after this is decided or closed one way or the other, in a future development, there could definitely be, somebody could propose.
Okay, well, I don't want to talk about the future, I want to talk about this project right here and now. And I wonder, show of hands, how many people would not approve of the project if you had some say in it? Not approve, not approve. And yet we have representatives who are like you, on the hook to approve this thing and the town, I would believe, would not approve it. So my question to you is, what recourse do we have at this point?
You would have legal recourse through the judicial process. So this could be challenged in court so that there is an appeal, there is an appeal process, so there's, I'm sorry, bailers, is it thirty days, is it sixty days?
Twenty one.
Twenty one days, sorry, twenty one days from the decision point. So twenty one.
That's not.
No.
Final decision hasn't been written.
So twenty one days from, let's just say today. Because if, if there's a vote or a decision made tonight, reaffirming or not, twenty one days from this day.
So it's up to your vote tonight.
For the, we're voting on conditions, not on the project, the conditions that.
We're voting on re, on either reaffirming or not affirming.
So I, I disagree with that.
Mr. Chairman, I disagree. We reopen the hearing. We can vote on the conditions, we can also vote to reconsider.
I'd like to do that. Do I make a motion?
No, no.
Thank you.
John, can I? Is there?
Can I address something?
Yes.
So can I just address your, your comments there? Yeah, just in defense of the reminder, so there have been front page articles since last September. Every other month or so that we've held hearing. Mayor Hurley, if she's still here, she went out and put up lawn signs all over town. This has not been something that's kind of been kept in the dark. There's been public hearings, whereas many people that are here tonight have spoken before. So it's been going on for quite some time and there's been a lot of news about it.
Well, assuming.
No, I'm just, no, just shedding some light on it, that's all, shedding some light. So.
Hi, Margie Berg, sixteen Fields Drive. I've been to all of these meetings, I've been following this pretty closely, I understand you've already voted on it, I would be opposed to it. However, in all of the meetings and everything I've listened to, I don't remember hearing any traffic study address the traffic Dwight and Chestnut. So the traffic through the traffic light going into Long Meadow to Congress Street. None of the traffic studies seem to focus on that intersection, they were all focused on the Shaker Road, Chestnut Street intersection. So I'm just wondering what happened to that conversation and if anybody's looking at that. So.
Traffic study included.
My name's Christina Roberts, I live at eighty two Lee Street. My husband spoke before, he mentioned we're new to town, which we are. However, I did grow up on the other side of my golf course in Springfield, so I am definitely no stranger to the area. Spent lots of time in town growing up. Just to kind of reiterate, absolutely, public safety, health, traffic, infrastructure, all of that stuff. That, you know, the trail, definitely a big thing as well, quality of life, I agree with all of that. But I did just want to say, I am not against development. I just think this is not the right development for this area, for this town.
Already spoke, I, I have nothing to add personally, I guess I just know, I was hoping to sort of get an answer. When I asked about, you guys are all supposed to represent everyone in the town. How did, how did we get here that you as representatives voted for this? I guess I was curious.
So the process for the planning board, there was a charter change in twenty sixteen. Previously, the planning board was elected. There are some folks on here that previously were elected. I was appointed, some other people were appointed or reappointed. And that is how the planning board has now continued on since, since that charter change. It was before that, elected to five year terms.
Why did you vote it for?
It's the charter change?
No, no.
The project, the project.
It seems like most of the town doesn't want it, why did you vote for it?
So I, I'll, I'll explain my vote to you. I can't speak for anybody else.
Do one thing.
Yes.
Just like a procedural, technical thing before you get into that. So procedurally, site plan review is just a review of the projects that use. Is it allowed in the zoning district on the property where it's located? The answer to that question is yes, and if that's, if, if it's yes and it meets the standards of review within the bylaw, it's chapter four fifty, I believe, section. It's the site plan review section point three, so I think it's nine point three. I don't have it in front of me, but I think that's it, is where all of the standards for review are. The notice of decision that I drafted, following the previous discussions by the board, has all of those standards of review and their findings of how the project meets those standards. So that's the answer to your question, it's online and available and I don't want to, just in the interest of time, I don't have it in front of me either, so I can't read through it. But that's the answer to your question specifically, if they want to get into the rest, they can, but that's all.
Conditions. So, so what I came to my conclusion was looking at the materials, everything that has been submitted publicly. So from the applicant, from the opponents, from BBH, the BHB, reviewing the traffic study that initially came out from the applicant, from the public testimony, from some of the experts that we saw during the public testimony. So you look at all that information and one of the first questions you have to ask, and this is for. And one of the first questions you have to ask, and this is for any project, this could be for the ones that we did in the beginning that lasted 30 seconds or for something like this that has lasted nine months, you ask yourself, is this an allowed use? We are governed by bylaws and rules that have previous, that have already been in place, that have been longstanding for many, many, many years. Longer than I've been alive, longer than most people probably here have been alive. They've been, some have been changed, added, deleted, debated in different capacity. Previously, we did have town meeting. Now we have town council, former government, council decides or we recommend. And then the council, ultimately, it's the decision maker. And then the voters are the ultimate decision maker on the town council. I came to this conclusion, looking at, it's an allowed use, that it's been not a disputed fact through all this. There've been a lot of concerns about how big it is, the effects of it, definitely don't deny that. But I have not heard from a single person that I recall, based on all the testimony, because I've been here for all of it, that this is not an allowed use. So then we go to the next stage, conditions. We put on, I'm forgetting the number now, but I think it was, it was well over a dozen conditions. There were some added on at the, at the, the last meeting, one of the most recent meetings, a few from, from members here. And you consider, and conditions are like a toolbox. So there's certain things we can do. There's certain things we can't do. You know, we can't ask them for a gajillion dollars so that we can do, but we can ask them for reasonable things. We can set reasonable limits. And, and then if the applicant says of these reasonable limits, I disagree with you. And if they challenge that, a judge will look and say, well, well, the planning board looked at reasonable conditions. These are reasonable based on other historical projects that have been made in the community or pursuant to the bylaws. Because there's certain things we can do as conditions. There's certain things we can't enforce. Some of those things are at the town council level or, you know, could be for the future, for future courts, for future town councils or governments to decide new bylaws. But we operate off of those bylaws. And a lot of it again is, and I said this earlier, it's precedent. It's setting precedent. So I felt it was an allowed use. I thought the conditions were quite favorable at mitigating. Primarily, the reason why I decided to open this up was obviously this was a request or something that had come from the town officials. My chief concern is specifically this traffic, change of traffic. I believe that while it's a quality of life issue, and yes, it will affect people on the fields, people on that side of Chestnut. And by having it, it would mitigate it, but it would affect, you know, the woman that was here, that was on Shaker Road. It would affect people on Great Woods. It would affect people on the other side of Chestnut. And just take a step back. Take, take away the fact that it's this project at this specific thing. Do people genuinely want to make a provision where some people are affected more than others in this community? And that's what I was thinking about. I've been, I've been thinking about this all weekend. I've been thinking about this now for over nine months. And I initially was, I voted against it, but I, I would, I believe that the project was acceptable to the way our bylaws are written. So I decided to vote in favor of it on May 2. But on May 16, I, I wanted to reconsider based on some other professional opinions that were given, some just further, upon further discussion. And other members also voted enough for that. But that principally, take away all the, all the traffic and all the concerns, I absolutely hear that. I don't feel comfortable personally hitting one roof in this town on the other. I just don't. I love this community. I'm a lifelong member of this community. My father's a lifelong member of this community and a lot of family members of mine. I, I take quality of life issues really seriously. I've had countless conversations. I've had some people that are in favor of it. Most so are against it, absolutely fair. I've heard it. I've heard it from people that I respect dearly. I've heard it from strangers that have come up to me. So I think we've all weighed that. And I know that some of us have come to different conclusions. I know Pete has come to a different conclusion. I respect the hell out of Pete. I, I appreciate his opinion. We've come to a somewhat different, we came to a different conclusion a few weeks ago. But that's, that's how, that's how democracy, that's how this thing works. And I understand that if you probably took a poll, most people in this community would be opposed to it. But what I look at is, is this, we, we have a procedure. We have a duty as planning board members to follow the rules and the procedures that are laid out for us. And I believe that I followed those. I came to a conclusion. Other members came to different conclusions as well. I'm not looking, this is not for me a popularity contest. If people believe strongly that I shouldn't, well, this is going to be my last meeting anyway. Then, then they should step up and stand up. And I have no problem hearing it from people because I love this community. And, you know, if you want to have a conversation afterwards, please be my guest because I care about what everybody thinks. Because I've read and heard everything that you have all said. That's my take. Do we have any more people?
At all. Thank you, Chair. Board members, my name is Robert Leisho. I'm a principal with MDM Transportation Consultants. I've given testimony before this board in the past. We've conducted supplemental review that augmented the independent peer review that VHB had done on this project. And we had originally issued a technical memo that I presented to the board. With the principal concern being, we weren't sure that the applicant fully vetted the project based on the potential tenancy of the project. We've since conducted a sensitivity analysis, independent of both the applicant and the independent peer reviewer. And we did that to understand the potential high side impact of a project like this. Since that time, there have been ongoing discussions, considerations by the developer, by the board, and conditions, potential conditions of approval. I've had a chance to look at what those recommended conditions look like. And I'll keep my statement short and simple. That is, the conditions should certainly reflect a safety valve, if you will, to ensure that whoever does tenant the site performs in a way that is consistent with the representations of the applicant. Right? That would dispel and guarantee that a tenant like Amazon, which is a higher generating use, would need to come back before this board, before actual tenancy occurred, right? I call that a safety valve. Traditional warehousing is a relatively benign use on its face. But in recent years, logistics companies like Amazon have really elevated the game. So that would be one condition that we would strongly advise be included.
I'm not sure if you were here. I know you came in later. We had like a two minute, we're so.
I apologize.
Second, but I'll let you finish your thought.
Yeah.
But I just wanted.
So that's paramount. Second, the developer, in my understanding, is now also open to funding physical improvements at Chestnut and Shaker. And that's significant because that is in line with what we had suggested in our sensitivity analysis would need to be done. Is what the developer offering going to solve all of the ills of the intersection? No. Is it sufficient to offset any increase in impact their project may have on the intersection? Probably. Right? So we think that it's a fair commitment by the developer to advance money for physical improvements. Third, the restrictions on the use of the driveway, which the developer has also, is, in our view, appropriate for trucks. Right? We understand departmental concerns relative to restrictions at all. The developer is willing to, open to complying with a restriction to have all trucks make right turns, right? The nearest sensitive receptor to this project is the Fields of Chestnut next door. And we think it's appropriate that those commercial vehicles go to the signal, which will have physical modifications to address these types of impacts. To then turn to Industrial Drive, which is an appropriate industrial quarter for the project. So, you know, we, we are supportive of what has been developed by proposed conditions or potential conditions. Will it solve all the ills of the intersection? No. But will it serve to reasonably offset the impact of the project, the reasonable conditions? In our view, they are. And I'd be glad to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you. Does anybody have?
I, I just can't let this pass. So. So you and the developer apparently went in the hallway and agreed that this, the making the truck traffic exit right is appropriate and would be a condition that you would want to see added.
I personally not met with the developer.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought in discussions with the developer you just said?
Well, the, there have been discussions among other parties, not my firm, relative to potential conditions. And it stemmed from a recommendation by your planner on, on things to be considered by this board. One of those is a restriction on turns at the driveway.
So would it surprise you if one of the conditions already listed here says, all truck traffic generated with the use of the proposed site improvements is required to exit the property eastbound, which is right? So, so it's already in there, isn't it?
It, it's not formalized. What I'm suggesting is that.
I'm reading it.
What I'm suggesting is that in an April 25 memo from your planner suggests the recommendations. That is one of the suggested recommendations. There is also provision in that same document that indicates some reservation on conditions specifically to traffic exiting the site required to turn right on Chestnut Street. There was a subsequent departmental meeting about a week ago to clarify what that condition should look like. And there is some consideration and concern on the department side, and I believe it came from Public Works, Fire and potentially Police, that no restrictions should be placed on this driveway because there aren't any other driveways in town that have these types of restrictions. That's correct. We were posed with the question, my firm was, if restrictions were placed on this driveway, what should they look like? Our opinion was that they should be as simple as possible and targeted to the most problematic movement or vehicle type, which is trucks. And so I'm reinforcing that our firm's opinion is that that is an appropriate condition as it would be modified. And I don't know how the board would vote or be inclined to vote. But that my opinion as a professional traffic engineer is that that truck movement is the appropriate movement to control or restrict, if you will, the right turn movements. It's an easier movement to make. It has less impact, the most, the most proximate sensitive receptor in the area. And it would have those vehicles go through an intersection for which dollars are being targeted for physical improvements to make it work better and safer. And, and so we support that. And I want to clarify, we did not have any. This stems from what we had received as part of the record for this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Neil Williams again from 62 Prospect Hills Drive. Mr. Kingston, you've been a servant to this town forever. And since I've been here, you have been one of the greatest voices of reason in this town. You've served on countless boards, commissions, town council. I thought I heard you say earlier that you could entertain a motion, or the board could entertain a motion to reconsider this whole thing. I thought I heard you say that. I'm asking you, would you make that motion tonight?
That's a question for us to deal with as a board. It's a question for us to deal with as, as a board. I will, as a board, I will make my decision about that after the hearing is closed and when we're in the proper, in, in the discussion to entertain those kinds of motions. Thank you.
Thank you. Please make that motion. I don't see anybody else that has stood up. I, I. Okay. Yes.
My name is Frank Fitzgerald. I'm an attorney for the developer. Thank you. I have offices at 46 Center Square in town. And happy to be here. I want to thank the board for their hard work on this process over this last several months. And just to reiterate that the developer and the owner is pleased to be exercising their, as a right, ability to develop this project in accordance with reasonable conditions imposed by this board. And the developer and the owner are agreeable to the conditions that you've imposed and hope, look forward to working closely with the neighbors, the abutting neighbors in the town and arranging for circumstances that make this work in everybody's best interest.
Can I ask a question, John?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald, I have a question for you. Your very first meeting back in September, you made a point indicating that you had tried to reach out to representatives at the Fields of Chestnut, but for whatever reason, you were unable to, to make that happen. Mr. Pill, I believe, in a March article at the Reminder, indicated that you would be willing to meet with the developers and discuss, maybe I got the word wrong, options. Has any of that ever, that has happened?
It's happening.
Happening now?
Yes.
Or has happened and you're where you need to be?
Yes.
Yes means what?
I think that the, I represent the Fields, not just myself. I lived at the Fields for the last 15 years. I developed the Fields and I'm the president of the Fields. The attitude of the people at the Fields was that we felt that we needed to leverage in order to bring all the people together and put the force on the board to try to negotiate the best position that we could for the people at the Fields who will be greatly impacted by this. And recently, working with the developers, we're on the same page. We agree fully. They've done a great job. They're going to be great neighbors and we want to get along. But one thing we're asking for is to be able to divert some of the truck traffic to go in the opposite direction. To go towards, most, we feel most are going to be going towards Connecticut anyways. We just want to formalize it and we want to be friends. That's all. We're just, this is business. We want to take care of it for the people because it's irreversible. Once the decision's been made, it can't go back. And the only, the only alternative we have is an appeal, which is very expensive for both sides. Takes and drags out the everything. I know that a lot of people in the community want to see that building taken down and new opportunities created for the town. Okay, so what we did here was not personal. It's business. Thank you, gentlemen.
So Mr. Riley, I.
All the great work that you've done.
Did have, did have one procedural question. So has some of the proposals that you may have, the two parties have been discussing, has the town been privy to all the proposals, all the discussions about different order? Have they?
We, we had a meeting. I'm, I'm not hearing that while my, while my hearing just went out.
Has it, has the town, has the town, i.e. planning board staff been privy, or any other town employee been privy to all the proposals or discussions that have been discussed?
There was a meeting on Friday, okay, with town officials. And it was Dan Mills from MDM Consultants. Were you involved in that?
Yes.
Dan, Dan Rule here is head of hearing.
So I'm sorry, did you say there were town officials at this meeting?
It was a Zoom meeting.
Yes, it was a Zoom meeting. It was.
Public, the town employees.
Public, public town employees. Yeah, it was the people from Fire, Police and Public Works. And we had a Zoom meeting. They gave us their opinions. We gave them our opinions and here we are tonight. And I, I can only tell you that they had somewhat different opinions than we have, but we're in full agreement with, with the developers. And we want to go, we want to work together in unison to get this thing done.
And the only thing I want to add is my understanding is there were representatives from the developers there. I had an email exchange with Seth Stratten from the Fitzgerald Law Office and Jesse Belter-Timmy, the town attorney. And I think the most positive thing the lawyers did was we all agreed to let everybody else meet. And not, sometimes the lawyer's taking a step back can be the best way to solve a problem. And so there were, and they can speak to who was, who was there because I wasn't. Dan, I think Dan was in on the meeting. And Dan Mills from MDM Consultants, they can.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I was, okay, thank you. And just quickly to address it, yeah, again, at the end of the day, this is discussing a proposal that has come through the correct process. I take none of this personally. I hope nobody else does. You know, these are neighbors, friends, family, people that I know in this community that feel very strongly about it. So I. So I, you know, if I took, if I took every single thing personally, I would have been off this in a week, and I probably would have also voted down 90% or significant number of the projects. But that's not the mandate that we have. I'm glad, I'm glad I asked that question to kind of bring some sunshine to the proceedings that-
The only way to do it.
The sun was not shining on some of the things going on behind the scenes because I certainly wasn't aware of, of a meeting of, of all those individuals. So then let me ask you this question. So prior to the last meeting, Mr. Punderson had put the original condition on, and Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, but your condition was the, only the truck traffic exiting the property had to go right.
Correct.
Nothing about truck traffic entering.
That was you.
That was me.
Right.
So how does the meeting of the minds feel that if we remove the condition about all traffic or all entering traffic have to do the dipsy-doo that Mr. Page talked about?
Okay, yeah. I think- We only care about right hand, I'm sorry. We're only concerned about the traffic turning right. We don't care about the traffic coming in. We want to be, we want to make it equitable and workable. So what we're asking for is truck traffic exiting the parking lot from the warehouse to take a right.
Not the entering truck traffic.
Not the entering truck traffic.
And so in the, in the meeting that took place last Friday, was that discussed and what were the thoughts? And I would ask the town officials who went through the meeting to perhaps weigh in on this. So were their biggest concerns the dipsy-doo that Mr. Page, I know you didn't use the word dipsy-doo, Ralph, I'm sorry, but the, the two mile loop, which isn't two mile, but two mile loop to enter? So they're okay with the right track, right hand exiting of the property, but they're really against the, the trucks entering through Shaker?
I might add some light to that.
Okay.
That, that was discussed. To, to restrict or specifically require that trucks route on the way in is very difficult to sign and enforce, and it involves other communities. It's not a practical restriction. It's very hard to practically even enforce it. What is, and I mentioned this, simpler to sign, post, and enforce and control is the exiting movement because it's emanating from the site.
Right.
And the concession, if you would like to call it that, between the parties was that a partial restriction is better than none. And so what Mr. Ruler is saying here is that the elimination of anywhere from six to 10 trucks an hour exiting and going right to the signal is a favorable condition from the standpoint of the Fields of Chestnut. They recognize that there may very likely be vehicles, trucks passing the driveway on the way in. The applicants' traffic study suggests that somewhere between 20 and 40% of the volume for this site is going to come from that direction. But clearly, it's a concession and it's a practical restriction, and it only applies to trucks. So we think it's an appropriate.
I see we're going to have a town response, which is great. Thank you, chief.
Just kind of real quick, we were, myself, the Fire, the Fire Department, Police Department, or Public Works, or Public Works, were asked to attend a meeting by our boss, the town manager, I think Bailey helped orchestrate it. Our comments were exactly what was said tonight. I was not at the meeting, my deputy chief was. Mark wasn't there, his lieutenant was, but Mark from Public Works was there. There was no real discussion. Our comments weren't based on one directional traffic going out and whether, in either way, coming in. We didn't, I didn't know that because I got feedback from my deputy right afterwards. So that's, that's something that was done without us being involved.
And I think the point, I'm just making one point, I think what's important about, at least why I asked this was, both those parties are definitely important, but the town also has to always have kind of a seat at the table because ultimately it's going to be the town that makes sure all these conditions are enforced, enforced and going through the process and going through the motions of it. And I know we have some very professional, really terrific public servants, so Plan Department, the other departments that have spoken this evening. Bailey, I know you had a quick-
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, I wasn't at the meeting. I was out of office on Friday, and we weren't really, I mean, we didn't really put together the meeting until last week, although we had the opportunity to do so since the last meeting of the planning board. So unfortunately, my schedule just didn't line up with their availability on Friday. So, but I will just say the biggest concern that I have, and I think, I, I again, don't want to speak for anyone else, but I think certainly the town manager, but others on town staff, is that we didn't have a traffic study for this particular condition, and we don't have the numbers. And furthermore, the site plan, it's open that you are approving, does not have this condition or does not, it, it doesn't include the site, you know, configuration that is needed to restrict the traffic to turn right. So I, I'm just, procedurally, it's difficult for a board to approve a site plan that is not in front of you. And that's my biggest concern at this point.
I don't know. I haven't had anybody else said his. I just also want to make sure, anybody on Zoom, if you would like to speak, if you can raise your hand. I haven't seen any, but just want to make sure. Okay, perfect. Yes. The microphone's right there.
Hello, my name is Kathy Yerkonis. I am a resident of 36 Baiden and grew up in East Long Meadow. I would love to talk about the viability of this plan in terms of quality of life, but hearing that would pass that point in the discussion. I'm more concerned about the issue on the table right now, the right hand turn, in terms of the, the traffic impact. And, and what really concerns me is what about the human impact for the trail? I'm, I'm not sure if that has been assessed. I am someone who loves the trail, and when I walk it, I see babies in strollers and kids on little bikes wearing helmets for their safety, but those helmets won't do anything if one of these trucks blows through the walkway. And, and that's assuming, you know, that the truck, traffic's not supposed to constant, we can't even cross the street. I just think that this is a very, very important issue, more important than traffic accidents, even though those are vital too. So please consider.
Here, I'm going to close again.
Motion has been made. Motion has been seconded to close a public hearing. Any further discussion? Yes. So we've heard the public, uh, public safety officials for the town saying that, you know, there's no study that's been done on the two proposals, restricting right hand only, and then the, the way around, they'd have to enter Shaker to Chestnut to get on the traffic. I know we have two board members who are leaving, but is it worth our while or additional information to see what the status, what that would do to the intersection? Or do we believe that there's been sufficient testimony from town officials and from the petitioner or the opponent's traffic engineer that it just was a bad condition? They did, they do not believe it was well thought out, and we move from there. I, well, this will be, yes, my last being, it's be Georgia's last meeting. I, you know, I think ultimately what a majority of the board decides to do, then that's what we'll do. I think we've, I think it would be probably cleaner to just redo the whole thing and have this, if that's the choice of the, of the board. Based on all the information that we've gotten, I, I feel comfortable making a decision. Other people want to make a different decision, though, that's their prerogative on this board.
My thoughts are we approve the conditions A and C and get rid of B, D, and E.
We have a, we have a motion to, motion on the table to close a public hearing. So what was that? What was that?
It's just his thoughts.
Oh, just, oh, okay.
He's ahead of himself.
I'm just saying we should get-
He's ahead of himself. We got to close the hearing first.
Yeah.
Close it.
So is there any more discussion on the motion that we have in front of us? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Any objections that carries four to one? Okay.
Can I make a motion here? I'd like to make a motion to modify condition B, to remove the, to state, if you will, all truck traffic generated with the use of the proposed site improvements is required to exit the property eastbound on Chestnut, period, and drop the rest of that condition, including the requirement for reorienting driveways.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, so it's all truck traffic generated with the use of the proposed site improvements is required to exit the property eastbound on Chestnut, period?
Period. Period.
Okay, and that would then delete the remainder? So that's a motion?
I would go along with it, but I'd also like to add on that we should approve-
Is there, do we want to, would you like to second the motion for just purpose of discussion?
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded.
So I would think, okay, we got to vote.
No. Do you want to add an amendment?
You can amend it.
Like to propose?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to also add in that we approve A, which is the idling of the trucks unless these are golf filters. What George just came up with is eliminating the westbound and that we eliminate D and E completely.
I would suggest, Pete, that we should vote on those separately?
Absolutely. I'm just, I don't know what's in my head when I'm thinking.
Okay, so we have the motion on B, deleting the-
Westbound.
Yes.
I second, we second that.
So motion's been made, motion seconded. Is there any further discussion on, on this motion? Hearing none? Yes. So, so I'm going to vote no. Just so, so no surprise. So I'm going to vote no. So through all these public hearings, I, I think that we have lost track of the people who actually reside on Chestnut Street. So they get the brunt of all the, all the traffic. Fields of Chestnut, although very happy they're there, I think it's a wonderful, wonderfully done development, they sit back. There's a gigantic burn in front. They don't get the brunt that Chestnut Street people get. So what, the, one of the reasons I proposed that was to try to alleviate the amount of truck traffic specifically impacting those people. So I'm going to vote no on that.
John. I was of the same thoughts, Russ, until Fields of Chestnut said that they would not mind the entrance, you know, trucks coming in, going past the fields. So that's why I, I go with just the exit eastbound on Chestnut Street because they've already said they don't really care about getting half the traffic. Am I correct on that? Okay.
No, I'm just trying to sort out my brain here.
So, okay, so we still have the motion on the table. Any further discussion? I'm-
Repeat the motion, please.
Motion is to, on, on condition B, keeping all truck traffic generated with the use of the proposed site improvements is required to exit the property eastbound on Chestnut.
End.
That would become a period, and then we would delete and enter the property from westbound Chestnut in the site driveways must be oriented in a way that result in the required traffic pattern. Is that correct?
That's my motion.
That is your motion.
Because that way we will not have to continue to get a new site plan, okay? And we've already heard, in my opinion, we've already heard that, first of all, keeping, arriving traffic all coming in from the west is impractical to stop that, and because you have no control over where they're coming from, and that, that is an acceptable condition for a certain amount of traffic.
Okay. All right. No further discussion, all those in favor of the, of the motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
And that carries three to two. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to also approve A in its entirety and C in its entirety and omit D and E completely.
So would you just, for the, there were certain people in the audience that didn't know certain conditions that had already been-
Would you like to?
Yeah, you should read those. Sure. So condition A is all idling trucks on site are required to utilize exhaust filters. Condition C, which would be, I'm sorry, it would be, it would be kept?
Yes.
Okay. So the proposed motion is keeping condition C, which is prior to demolition of the existing structure, the developer, developer will, one, conduct an air quality study to establish a baseline to measure future impacts against, two, conduct a study of ambient noise to establish a baseline to measure future impacts against, and three, submit a road unit control plan to the East Long Meadow Board of Health for their approval. And then part of the proposed motion is to delete condition D, condition E. Condition D is the site egress must implement motorized one-way traffic spikes that are timed with the traffic signal at Chestnut and Shaker in such a way to prevent the queuing of vehicles along Chestnut and ensure that such queuing happen on the site itself. E, the developer, East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC, must work with the town of East Long Meadow to change the existing flashing pedestrian crossing sign from button activated to motion activated.
So I proposed condition E, and when I proposed that, my thinking was not that the private developers would somehow be involved in the connection or timing of that light, and I know that at our meeting, Ralph had suggested that, one of them, that it would be more of just changing that crosswalk instead of it being a button to motion activated when a pedestrian approaches. So that was never my thought.
I think, I think what, I talked to Mark Berman before, and I think he was referring, he meant to refer to D when he was talking about connecting private and public infrastructure because we would never have a private party tap into the signal, the traffic signal itself that could create, I mean, security issues for public safety if someone gets a hold of, you know, the ability to change the light suddenly, you know? Anything can happen when stuff like that is out of our control. So I think that's what he was referring to rather than-
Than E.
E, which referred to the pedestrian crossing. And I think, as I stated in my original memo on April 25th, that, that condition, I, I don't think we had any issues with that. It does state that the town, or the developer would work with the town to do that, so we would be able to make sure that that happens in a way, if it's possible. I think there was some concern that it might not be possible with the equipment that we have, but again, it's something that we can look at and potentially do with that condition, so.
And don't delete it.
So Pete, will you amend your motion to leave E in?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and I'd like to vote on D and E separate, or C.
That's reasonable.
C and D, I'd like to vote C and D separately. So do you want to make, do you want to potentially withdraw that motion?
Yeah.
And then, and then make a motion for each one?
I withdraw the original motion to keep A, B as changed and eliminate, and keep C and eliminate D and E. To keep A, B as we have changed it, C and E.
So this is on keeping A, C, and E, correct?
Right.
Okay. Okay, motion has been made.
I'll second that.
Aye, here a second, okay.
What's, what's the motion?
It is.
Lee, we're going to get rid of D.
Keeping motion A, C and E.
Okay, and the one adding D?
It was, D is a separate, I think it's a separate motion.
Just to accept those?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
All right. So motion has been made, motion has been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Okay, that carries four to one. Um, so I believe, I'm guessing you're not, we might be looking at another, the next motion for D?
Where it did that.
Is that how you wanted it?
No.
I think we wanted to split it. That's what.
I make a motion to eliminate, uh, condition B.
Do I hear a second?
Wait, wait, to eliminate condition B?
D.
Oh, D isn't, yeah, I touched the B again.
He is in dog.
I second that.
Okay, motion has been made, motion has been seconded to strike condition D. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Okay, um, so I see we have, uh, all the way from F to the, uh, let me just make sure I have this correct, from F to B. Now, would we like to, to collectively vote on those? Would we like to visually?
Vote.
I'm, I'm making a motion to affirm the decision with the, uh, conditions as altered under the last few votes.
Okay, so this is a motion to approve.
To affirm.
To affirm the decision with the previous amendments, proposed, condition amendments that have been proposed.
Second.
Motion has been made, motion has been seconded. Um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm still concerned about condition B. So that's still my opinion. Does anybody else have any other further thoughts?
So I originally supported this project, um, with all of the conditions. Now that all the conditions are no longer there, I don't feel comfortable supporting it. And I'm going to tell you why. So we heard from the DPW director and we heard from the police chief that in their opinions, directing traffic to that, well, the traffic at the, that, that intersection would impact public safety for the entire town. And it's my belief that you can turn down a site plan if the impact is so negative that it impacts the entire town. Our public safety officials indicated in their testimony that it would impact the entire town. For all of you people who have followed this very closely, I don't think you've heard anybody in this board say, oh, we can't wait to have a 575,000 square foot warehouse. I've not heard one person say that. I don't want to see a 575,000 square foot warehouse. I wanted to see mixed use housing and retail, which unfortunately due to the time, it didn't happen. That wasn't allowed use. But as Jonathan has mentioned, this is also an allowed use with conditions that could make it palatable. I think that yes, we could do a better job with design and so forth of that intersection to maybe make it a little more palatable. But we heard the police chief, we heard the DPW or the deputy DPW superintendent, they felt that this would have an impact on the entire town. Because we can't just make a decision based upon one specific, you know, narrow area of town. But if there's an impact on the entire town, I believe that we can make a negative decision, even if it's an allowed use.
Give me that microphone.
Thank you for bringing forth the exact reason why I voted nay. It's bad for the town of East.
I just would like to say, I, I will be opposing this reaffirmation primarily because condition B is still in it. I think it sets a precedent that is going to be difficult for future planning board members to handle. And it'll mean that other projects, and frankly, people that are watching and people that remember this, should remember that this, that if it can, if this type of traffic change could be made at this site, then it should basically be allowed at virtually any other site. So that's.
It is.
Uh, it, it is, but it's.
It is already.
It's setting a precedent because name, naming a, a location in town that has this or even on that street.
We're going to, we approved for the, the new bank facility in the center of East Long Meadow for right-hand exit already.
It's already been set. And, and we have the ability.
I, I.
We have the.
I'm, I'm talking about though, I'm, I'm not talking about the rotary. I'm talking about a, every other business left and right on that street, on industrial, on Benton and all of those. I'm just saying that it will create, it'll allow that to be able to happen. Not saying that there's those that exist in certain instances, especially on a property that literally will sit right next to the.
They already did.
The rotary, but I, I see it differently.
And I, and I just want to add. I, I think to the developer and to the representative for the opponents, I think you could have saved us all a lot of time tonight by just standing up early on and kind of tell us about your special meeting on Friday. I think it would have moved things much quicker and probably been very illuminating very early on for everybody, but.
I, I, I leave here quite frankly, more frustrated at the process. But this is a process that we, we are at. Um, so we have a motion. So any other further discussion for the, for the board? So hearing none, we have a motion to approve or to reaffirm, excuse me.
No, to affirm.
To affirm. With, with the conditions that have been amended. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
And that motion fails.
So just to let everybody know what it means.
So it means that the decision at the May second meeting has not been affirmed. So.
What is that?
Yeah. Go ahead, George.
George, you want to?
So let's go back then, um, since we did, since the reaffirmation failed because of the conditions that were included. Okay, I'm going to go back and, and make a motion that we drop, um, condition B. Since that's what seems to be everybody is opposed to.
Motion has been made to drop condition B. Which, which is.
The traffic direction.
The traffic direction. And now this would be because the, that previous vote just failed, this would be reverting it. I'm assuming B as it was orig, as it was written, or.
Eliminating, eliminating.
Eliminate wholesale.
That's my motion is to eliminate B and then see if we will reaffirm it as modified.
Motion has been made.
So I'm confused. I'm just confused. I'm, I'm confused.
So what, we tried to affirm the decision that failed. Now we are, now there's a motion up because now we're, we're back to, we're back to it previously. We're back to the same thing we were back at, at the beginning of the.
We're modifying the decision, the conditions of the decision.
So ultimately, we either can affirm it tonight or motion to reconsider.
Reconsider what, the whole thing?
That's what it would be, yes.
So not on it, doing.
That we, well, we had a vote to.
Affirming the conditions as written.
Oh, okay, minus dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and now since it failed because everybody objected to condition B.
Oh.
I'm making a motion to eliminate condition B.
Okay.
Okay, and then again, vote, see if we will affirm it with that modification. But first of all, we need to vote to eliminate B.
Okay. So. So if we can do this, my mistake, John, it's my mistake. Okay? So I'm okay. I'm okay voting on, what did you say, what condition?
Can I also amend, uh, motion? Can we add motion D? Because that seems like something that we had, the majority of us had agreed upon.
John, let me, so the motions that have been approved by the board already have not been negated other than the one that you voted down. So all of the changes that you've made to be in D and E, that's all still done. The only motion that George has put is to remove B.
I see.
Whether it's amended or not, doesn't matter at this point. You can vote on that and then move on to the next one if you want to look at any other changes to the conditions.
So what we had already done, okay.
But his thought is to remove B and then look at everything that has already been proposed by the board tonight with the conditions and, and affirming the decision that way.
Okay. All right. So we, George made a motion to strike out condition B entire, in its entirety. I did not hear a second on that unless somebody did second that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, motion has been seconded. Um, any further discussion? I think we.
So I'm, I'm going to, so I'm going to vote against removing B altogether because something is better than other. If it goes to court, a judge is likely to see that and be okay with it, rather if it's not there. So.
All right. Anybody else before?
I want B as modified, kept in it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. So motion's been made to remove. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
George, you and I?
I and I.
Okay, any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, that motion fails. Um, okay, so now we're back to the conditions.
Affirming.
Affirm, to affirming, yes.
So affirming all of the conditions, but not the approval of the site plan? Or is that going to be separate?
The, the affirmation is of the conditions.
Okay, okay, thank you.
If you want to reconsider the approval of the site plan, because we did not reaffirm the, the conditions, you would then need to move to, um.
Yeah, so I know we're getting, I know we're getting into procedure here, process. So I voted one way in May based upon all of the conditions that we had approved.
Right.
Now that all, some of the conditions have been changed.
We've modified.
I don't feel, I don't feel the same way.
So after, after we vote on reaffirming it, if we don't reaffirm it, then you can make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So would we like to do another motion to?
Reaffirm.
Reaffirm, excuse me.
I'll second George's motion.
Motion has been made, motion has been seconded. Any further discussion?
That's removal of B completely?
No, we haven't. No, 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 B's been modified. Only, only changes that have, that have stuck, B and, and broke off there and then, and then taking out D. Everything else is intact. So that, we are affirming that with those two changes.
Changes don't pass, then we can revoke on the whole thing.
So, okay, so motion's on the table. Uh, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. And that carries, that affirmation carries.
So I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the, uh, approval that was, um.
Wait, I'm sorry, we just, we, you, you just, you.
No, this is the original vote to.
This, okay, so this was just affirming.
Yeah, right.
The changes.
Now we want to go back so we can change the vote.
There are vote of May, uh.
Second, May second.
Just for the site plan.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made to reconsider the May second vote. Second has been made.
Explain what that is though.
So a motion to reconsider would be, we bring it, George, help me out here. So we, this would come back to, I'm sorry. Better on the procedure than I am.
Okay, so the, we, we closed the public hearing. We had still, we have the ability still though to reconsider a, a vote that we took earlier. And that's what the motion is. So it would be a revote on the, uh, proposal overall.
And then what would that cause? Yay or nay? What would that cause?
Well, if we could, we would, it could be a rejection of the site plan.
And that would be nay.
That would be a nay.
And then yay would be?
Approving the site plan.
Approving the site plan, okay. Just want to make sure people at home.
The motion is.
No.
The motion is to review it.
The motion is to reconsider.
To reconsider.
Has to be a yay.
If you were to reconsider.
Well, first of all.
To reconsider, then.
Just to reconsider.
Then you may have to vote on the.
Do that.
So reconsider, and then it would be another motion.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I see. Okay, so this is just simply to reconsider. Reconsider. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor of reconsidering the motion say aye.
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 All those opposed? No opposition. Um, okay. Now we have reconsidered the motion, the previous motion. Is there another motion now on the, on the fine, on the whole project?
Would be for approval.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve the plan. As, as with the conditions as stated, amended this evening.
Sorry about this folks, but we want to make sure we get it right. Um, so I'm just going to pick on my friend, Mr. Scott, who I still see in the audience.
Before you get into that, I'm, I'm going to second that. So we have a motion that we can discuss.
No, he didn't second it. I just made it.
I, I seconded it.
Okay.
Now we can discuss.
So motion's been made seconded.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we discuss?
Now you can talk about it.
Sorry. Vote.
A vote on the project, yes.
So I saw a very nice letter to the editor in the reminder, given reminder, a lot of love today. Um, and you called, kind of was a call to action by you to come and speak out against an opposed project. We had a meeting last Friday where there seems to be a meeting of the minds to approve the project with conditions. You're a resident of the Fields of Chestnut? Just a yes or no?
The hearing is closed.
Yeah.
The hearing is closed.
Well, I saw a letter in the remind, in the reminder. Called action, oppose, defeat this project. But we have a meeting last Friday where apparently there seems to be an agreement that with this, this and this, everything's okay and we move forward. I'm having a hard time understanding the disconnect here. And it causes me, causes me great concern. So, but.
I cannot stand it against, I, I simply, I believe that it is an allowed use, but I believe that the conditions are more challenging. More egregious, thank you. Um, than, yeah, than keeping in the house. So. All right, we have a motion to approve or deny the project. That's in front of us right now. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the project as amended, as discussed. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Nay.
Nay. Nay.
Motion failed. Make a motion for a ten.
For a five minute break.
Yeah. Motion's been made for a five second recess.
Five minutes.
All those.
Next week, next week. Now, I deem this totally out of order. You have not scheduled a public hearing, given proper notice for the vote you just took. Our client, our developer is still, has an approved site plan and this vote means nothing.
The claim board has made a decision this evening. Thank you.
Without the proper procedure.
Okay, all those in favor of the five minute recess?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you. Thank you. Excuse me. This meeting is coming back to an order. If we can have everybody that's talking, please talk outside of this room or outside. That would be much appreciated. Thank you. Please, please step outside. Thank you. Okay. All right. Mr. Clerk, we are, are we, are we back?
Nine o'clock.
Okay. You can read in the next public hearing?
Case SP 2023-03, request for special permit for North Star Athletics, a gymnastics facility at 45 Maple Street, GIS 34 Crane Ave. Assessors' parcel ID 27-25-0, located in an existing structure in the industrial zoning district. Applicants Natalie Fergion, excuse me if I butchered that.
We should have done.
Jessica Proko, 169 Blueberry Hill Road, Long Island, Mass. 01106.
Hi, um, so it's Natalia Fergion and Jessica Proko. And we are cheerleading.
We're cheerleading, match, match, six, six. I just wanna.
I'm sorry, you've been waiting since six.
That's okay. Sorry. Thank you for your patience. We do appreciate it.
So hopefully this is easier than the last one. So we have opened an all-star cheerleading program for youth in East Long Meadow, so in the old Pioneer Gymnastics Facility. And they have requested that we seek special permits, and so we are here. So first of all, we're doing this, so any information that you need, just let us know.
I, I don't see, I, I know this has been commercially used previously, I believe.
So the only reason I require the special permit is because in the industrial, or is it business or industrial?
Industrial.
Yeah, and the industrial, or sorry, so many things on my mind, um, or in the industrial zone, sorry. A recreational facility, which is the closest use to this, um, within our use table, required a special permit, so.
So if this is commercial, then we wouldn't basically have to go through the public hearing process. If this was in commercial.
I will, I don't know without looking at the use table, but it requires a special permit.
Okay.
It's not a by right use, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Nope. The only question I had, um, the only question I had, there'd been some talk that the building might not be up to code for this use, uh, because of the number of exits. Is that been resolved?
That's been resolved. We met with, um, um, sorry, that.
The building commissioner?
Commissioner, yes.
Yes.
No fire.
And, and that's fine.
Came through. And then you have some permanent options. Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
I can confirm that, George.
Okay, good. Okay, uh, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open it to the public. If anybody on Zoom or here in person has any public comments. Hearing and seeing none, I will bring it back to the.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion has been made, motion has been seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the special permit?
Second. Motion has been made to approve the special permit and second it. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions?
We should have done these first.
Passes them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Sorry for having you wait all night. We should have done these first. See you, Jeff. Good to see you, man.
All right, uh, next item.
Case SP 2020-04, request for special permit for Comb and Collar Pet Styling LLC, a pet grooming salon and boutique at 57C Maple Street, GIS 55 Maple Street. Assessors' parcel ID 27-15-0, located in an existing structure in the business zoning district. Applicant Diana Garcia, 67 McConus Road, Wilbraham, Mass. 01095.
Good evening, I'm Diana Garcia, and I'm the owner of Comb and Collar Pet Styling LLC. We are a high-end grooming salon and boutique looking to open at 57C Maple Street. We provide pet grooming services and sell pet accessories. We are a business looking to cater to its community's veterans by offering a veteran discount. We are also proud supporters of Canines for Warriors, which is a nonprofit that helps pair veterans with canines that they need to live a better life.
Okay, um, does anybody have?
I just have a question.
Yes.
So there's no boarding of animals at all?
No.
Training, no boarding, okay.
Grooming services and selling accessories.
Uh, you have it in another location, or are you moving here from someplace else? Are you starting?
So we've started, uh, Comb and Collar started as an online business selling dog collars online. In the meantime, we've been working as groomers at a corporate grooming facility, so now we're ready to open on our own.
Oh, great, great, thank you.
Any other questions? This is also a public hearing, so if anybody from the public, um, would like to speak on this over this project, seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion. Motion has been made, motion has been seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions, that carries?
Make a motion to approve this?
I'll second.
Motion has been made, it's seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I know we have the director's report on here, Bailey, I don't know if there's. No director. Well, I would just, as a point of, um, quickly, I, I would, this is my last meeting, I know it's George's last meeting too. I would like to say thank you to the planning board members, also to the ones that I've served with previously that are no longer on, Lou, Hyde, the planning board staff, both current and, and in the past. This has been a very interesting, um, you know, forward to be on, I, I've certainly learned a lot. And I know we've all sometimes come to different conclusions on decisions, but I've really gained a, a, a great respect for all of you. And I mean that genuinely, um, and I look forward to seeing the work that you all do. And, and at the end of the day, we're all here to try to best serve the public and, and serve the residents here in East Long Meadow. So I, I heartfelt, thank you.
We, we now are gonna have you join the road gallery back there who, who keep coming.
I won't be going, I won't be going far.
I just want to say, John, thank you for your service and also for stepping up to the plate as chairman, um, because we needed that. And, um, just thank you for everything. I look forward to seeing you on town council and coming in and when, when things, when planning, uh, when, when zoning comes before town council, I will probably show up as a citizen and complain.
Absolutely. I expect the total accountability, and I, I invite that, I welcome that, and I, I truly do love the debate. Sometimes it gets a little interesting, sometimes a little theatrical, but, um, it's, it's, it's important stuff.
Good stuff. I'll make a motion to adjourn, second.
And I also want to thank LCAP for all their years of doing this and continued service. For all it's done, thank you. It's, uh, we have some great public servants.
Motion, motion to adjourn, to adjourn.
Has been made to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.